We have a quorum established. Judd is on the phone. And we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any open forum or public input? Yeah, do you have something?
She is here.
Something else? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right. We will move to five. Approve agenda, changes to agenda. We are going to add to action items, letter H. Approve our home tuition rates.
That's the next meeting.
Our home tuition.
Yeah, but that's the second part of. Oh. That's the second meeting.
Well, the whole, yeah, but the whole agenda, I mean, you got the whole agenda there.
Okay, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep. You just gotta approve agenda on there twice. So that's why I was asking.
Oh.
It's also number thirteen as well.
My fault. Yep, you're right. So bottom line, we'll be able to do that, I guess, in that second part of it. It was not published in the paper with letter H.
Okay. And then the other thing is for the second part of the meeting, we're adding personnel to the executive section. Was also in addition.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. And then we'll move to the budget hearing.
Okay. Give you these two sheets of paper here. These are slides, the slide presentation. And then this is a little bit more breakdown per function. A little bit more than what was in the paper. The paper, all you have to publish is by different totals. And this gives you a little bit more history. So the first column there is twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Second column was last year's budget. And then the third and fourth columns is twenty-twenty-one and the actual for that year. And then the difference is the final column for twenty-twenty-one. Since we're not fully done with twenty-two yet, I don't have the actual on there. So that's what these sheets are here, per fund, okay? So. The total budgets for each one. General fund is just over five million dollars. Five million, seventy-nine thousand and change. Capital outlays, almost three million. That is because of the HVAC project. Special education fund is nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. Food service fund, three-hundred-and-five thousand. And then the enterprise fund, which is your driver's ed and preschool, that is around sixty, just over sixty thousand dollars. So those are the expenditures. Now, the anticipated revenue is this next slide. And then we can, we'll go back to these sheets here in a sec. So. Those were the expenditure amounts. Now, the anticipated revenue, and then the deficit is showing up there. Now, John knows this more than most. That number, when you look, the reason why I give you this sheet here, so you don't worry too much. FY twenty-one, twenty-two. If you look at the bottom of that, estimated uses of reserves there. On the first page, second column bottom, was a bigger deficit than this budget's showing. And we are, we're, I mean, we're gonna transfer two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand from capital outlay this year. And we're probably still gonna go down a little bit, not much. Okay? I'm thinking maybe fifty, sixty thousand.
Normally, what have you done in the past?
Well, the last two years haven't been real normal, Jill, so it's hard to remember. But you'll see it at the end, and the fund balance, and how if there for a while, it was going like this. And then we started going like this with it, and then it really went like this because of the COVID and the extra money. And you'll see that on slide twelve here.
Okay.
I do have a slide for that. Okay? So when you see this three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollar deficit, you know, you estimate the revenue's low and you estimate the expenditure's high. That's, that is after the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar transfer. And we've never been close to that in the past. Now, this, we do have some ESSER money in this that the expenditures that got added. The reason why it's over five million is we have some ESSER expenditures in there that we might not have later on. That's why it's up a little bit. If you look at the total budget at the bottom of column two and one and two, you know, it's up about a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Or actually, no, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yeah, you got nine-twenty-five, you got oh-twenty-five, so we got it here.
Two-hundred-and-fifty. You know, some of that is our salaries. And some of that is the other, the kindergarten, extra kindergarten position, that's ESSER money. What else was there that was ESSER that I can't think? There's some ESSER expenditures in there that, I mean, we anticipated using four-hundred-and-four thousand dollars of that money. Not all in one year, but towards the general fund expenditures.
In your art plan that you approved last school year, there's roughly four-hundred thousand dollars. We had to allocate at least a minimum of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand for learning loss. But you remember the strategies that we put in place, we write around four-hundred thousand is what we plan to still spend, even though, and that's including, that's above and beyond the dollars that we have for your HVAC project as well, which was ESSER dollars as well.
So. And that leads to the second line up there, the capital outlay deficit and the large expenditures on that side. So if you click this page in our fund, the second one is capital outlay. We did jump up the elementary and the secondary programs a little bit, just because things are higher. Textbook rotation was one of the reasons for the secondary programs to be so much higher. Last year, we didn't spend hardly anything on textbooks. This year, it was the science curriculum, which was fifty-five thousand. So that's one of the reasons why that is up from the previous year.
Right.
And then you look down here, building acquisition, construction improvement. We had a budget last year, but we hardly spent any of it. One point five, now two-hundred, two million of that. So it's basically the whole HVAC project in there again. And then our lockers, our roof, that we'll have bids for tonight, a vehicle, one of the big ticket things on there. There was a couple other projects I can't remember off the top of my head, but.
I wonder if we put the floor in there.
Oh, yep. I have forty or sixty thousand for the floor. So that's another, I mean.
The entryway, the threshold.
Yeah. So that's close to, I mean, you take the roof project of maybe a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty, the lockers are at a hundred. You got thirty or forty for the vehicle and sixty for the floor, you're through over three-hundred thousand right there. And then some other improvements that we may have had, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Those are the big ticket items. Then we're getting into some, I don't know, nickel and diamond, but some smaller projects.
I guess the vehicle is not in part of that one. That was the next line there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Me too.
I can't remember. There's something I'm missing. I can't remember. I'll think of it.
When the line says secondary program, typically remind me again what that means.
High school, junior high, middle school, high school.
Okay.
So that's anything, like, we budget every year. I take twenty, it used to be twenty, I put twenty-five thousand this year apiece for the elementary and the high school to replace stuff like this. Chairs, desks, carpets, ceiling tiles, bookshelves, those types of things. So that we bumped up a little bit each side. So that is part of that, those first two lines, along with textbooks and maybe any computer equipment that are specific to those. Those programs are in there when Tony gives me his budget. Because when it says technology services, that is just for Tony's stuff, like the servers and Wi-Fi, access points, switches, things like that, not necessarily specific. But when we buy new Chromebooks for a sixth grade class, that goes in the, or seventh grade class, that will go secondary program line. Any other questions on that? Operating transfers out there, I did two-hundred-and-seventy-five again, plus the one-thirty-two for the transfer to the QZAP bonds. That's where you get the four-oh-seven there on that at the bottom.
And when is that done?
Two years yet? I think we had either two and a half or one and a half, something like that. Well. Hey, we got a couple yet, because we're only at five, almost six-hundred thousand in there, right? What is the total? Five ninety-four, and we gotta get to nine twenty-four. At a hundred-and-thirty-two a year. So two or three.
So very good. I saw comments here that the enrollment wise, you just figured same as last year.
Exactly. My enrollment, when I did the budget for revenue, was based on last year's five-fourteen number. Well, as of now, today's date, we are up to five-thirty-three.
Twenty ahead.
Yeah, about twenty ahead. So that's not figured into this general fund side over here, no.
So you'll have more revenue, what's projected on the shelf, if they stay until September. Gotta be here last Friday in September.
Okay. Any other comments so far? So the third line up there is the special education. This one is actually down. We had BCS, is that the correct initials, right, in Mitchell? They're no longer open, so we don't have that expenditure. But we did have, we do have people hired here to replace them, which didn't come up to as much. So we're gonna have possible maintenance of effort, but that should be a reason or a rationale. There's, what do they call it, exceptions that you can, as long as you meet it with the exception. And that could be an exception because that place is no longer available to us to spend the money at that location.
So that's day programs.
Yes, yep, yep. You see that? That was a little bit of a difference.
And what did that do for us?
Which one?
The day, why, what was it?
The day program is for a student who attends a program in Sioux Falls.
Oh, okay. It's for a specific student. That was something very popular.
So. Still have our residential one, residential placement one, but we don't have that day program. Other than that, it was just, it was really just salaries in this, in the special education one. As you can see, the program twelve-twenty-one, the first line, is up a little bit. That's all salaries and benefits mostly. Everything else is pretty much the same. There. And we did not spend over a million dollars last year. In SPED, mainly because BCS closed partially way through the year. And I was high on the residential programs last year, so we'll see if that.
What's the last day of the year?
It was June thirtieth. So. You'll approve, some of these bills that you'll approve here in a little while are June thirtieth bills and some are next year's bills. The next one really is not on the slide up here, but the bond redemption fund, that's the QZAP bonds, just showing you that we're putting another hundred-and-thirty-two thousand in revenue in there, and there's no expenditures this year. So it's not, there's no expenditure, so there's nothing budgeted up there. Food service is the next one. Probably gonna, well, salaries is the main drive here. I don't, was food service, I'm sorry, it's, we still don't know what our, we have an idea. Forty cents extra for federal reimbursement from what it was prior to this school year, when they started giving us four dollars and fifty-some cents a meal. So before, it used to be three forty-one. So I'm anticipating three eighty-one is what we're, we're told. I don't know if it's official yet. But with that, I mean, our cash balance and the food service went up tremendously this last year. And most of that is because of that four, we were, everybody got their meals. That is no longer the case next year. Students will have to fill out free and reduced meal applications again, and they have to qualify in order to receive them. But the federal reimbursement rate is still gonna be pretty high. So we're not gonna set our lunch prices tonight because we waited to get feedback from the state department, because they're just getting the information from the feds.
So you make a low?
Well, you gotta keep, you're supposed to keep your meals within a certain distance of the federal reimbursement rate.
There's a range in there that we have to abide by, whether you want to or not. You have to stay within the range, or then you do not qualify for the national school lunch program. So we're waiting for those numbers. That's what's on your agenda. We'll probably end up tabling and not set the school lunch prices because there's too much information we don't know yet to set the appropriate price. We certainly, because we have the influx of money due to last year's, where the reimbursement rate was over four some dollars per meal, because they were all free. And now they're adding forty more cents on to national school lunch pricing, back to whatever number they want to go back to. What'd you say, a year ago, Craig? From three eighty, so it's really a wild card for us. We don't want to ask our parents, who pay full price, to pay any more than they absolutely have to, so.
When we're sitting there with that big of a cash.
Yeah, so we're waiting on the.
But we have to wait for the waivers to be approved at the state. And the waivers meaning, a couple of them. One, for the not having to raise your prices, because they, there was waivers for that during this COVID stuff. And then the other waiver is your cash balance.
I was gonna ask that.
Yep. Yes. So there's two waivers that we're gonna have to do, hopefully, and I'm thinking they're gonna, the way it sounds, it will be okay. But then you'll have two years to spend that now.
Because we have to be in compliance with the reserve funds too, and your food service.
But they've also told me they're gonna maybe mess with the length of those reserve funds. I've heard that, where it could go from three months' worth of your operating expenditures to six months' worth of your operating expenditures. So there's a lot of questions.
And you know when that will be?
Oh, well, the application that I gotta fill out is due by August first, I think, so hopefully this month they get there. But the part, it's not necessarily all their fault, because they're not getting stuff for the federal government time as well. It's just everything's rushed down the line. It's part of the reason. So this, I mean, this is just based on local revenue before. I upped the federal revenue a little bit, and then the salaries are in the expenditure side. Because a lot of those went up, because a lot of our ladies in the food service area were not veteran. So their salaries were below that fifteen-dollar by a ways, and we moved them all up to fifteen bucks. So, you know, for six or seven people there, it was, it's a bigger jump because of that. So. Then the last one is the enterprise fund, and that one is a zero up on here on your slide, mainly because you're paying for it, whether you receive the money or you gotta take it out of general fund, because this has, cannot be negative at the end of the year. So anticipated for this driver's ed is pretty good. You got two lines here, you got preschool services and driver's ed. Driver's ed really pays for itself pretty close. It's the preschool services that do not, and we're gonna anticipate transferring. It doesn't show, yeah, transfers in there, it is, sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars, I think, so. Hopefully. Any questions on that? Okay, so when you're looking at our total, total budget of all of those combined, it's eight and a half million dollars. That is pretty high, but most of that's because of the HVAC project, and your capital outlay budget usually isn't two-point-nine million. It's usually about, I mean, eight-hundred thousand to a million, so we're almost, we're doubling, almost tripling that right now. But percentage-wise, when you look at this, I know it's kind of small, sorry. But there's a percentages of the overall budget, fifty-four percent of it is general fund, thirty-two percent is capital outlay, which is higher than normal. The other ones are probably pretty normal, ten, three, and one percent. Here's your budgeting trends in the last five years. General's kind of slowly been, last three years, been going up about the same pace. Capital outlay, huge jump the last two years, mainly because of the HVAC project, which we thought was maybe gonna get started, but didn't this last year, so then it's high again. Special ed's pretty, pretty even, and then the enterprise fund is gone down a little bit in the last couple years, because we haven't had to supplement some of the driver's ed and stuff. Mill levies, so these are set by the, by the state, and it's a combination of your taxes and state aid, and that's why the levies go the way they do, but, you know, the levies each year that are set by the state, they've been declining. So, but part of that is because the valuations of our property are going up. But this was a correction year in the property valuation. So the amount of money you're receiving in the tax side is less, because they did a correction on the valuations of the properties. Every so many years, there's a correction, and it went down.
Any of any one of those categories, Craig?
Well, in the.
Are we talking about owner occupied?
I'm talking about the value, total valuation.
Our assessed valuation.
Or assessed, I'm sorry, yes, the assessed valuation.
Over a district.
Yes. It's a correction year for that. So it went from, what is it, five-hundred and, I think it was five-hundred-and-forty-five million to five-hundred-and-fourteen million. And I can bring the budget up to show that in my spreadsheet, but I don't have that on the slide, but it did go down. Owner occupied is down, you know, they all are going down. I can't remember the totals, but red understank, it was five-point-nine-nine, actually. Non-owner occupied is the business side of it, that's down under ten, around nine.
There you go, number on the left, your two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, that's what, millions? Now, what is that? What is that?
That's your mill levy.
Mill levy, that's.
Two point, yep, so like, ag is three-point-one-two, I think it was.
Per?
Per thousand.
Three dollars per thousand.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, these are all per thousand.
Yes.
So like, owner occupied was five-point-nine-nine per thousand. This one was around nine. I don't have the exacts. I can go bring that up in my spreadsheet.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, as to how people understood that, so.
But they all go on a downward slope they have for the last five years, but we have no control over that. So here's where our tax request comparisons are for the last couple of years. And the reason why I brought up that, as you can see, the general fund went down. All, I mean, capital outlay, we're asking the same amount. But the, but the amount, the levy may change because the assessed valuation went down. We're not asking for more money. But since people's assessed valuations went down, they might show a little bit of a, when you look at it per thousand, it might be one-point-five-seven instead of one-point-five-five, for instance. And special education went down because that one got dropped as well, and it's based on our valuation. So we're not necessarily, you know, when our revenue went up, it's not necessarily coming from the taxpayers, it's coming from the state because of the six percent increase on their side from state aid.
Which is a good, yeah, it's a good thing. It's the last side of your.
So now your five, five-year tax dollar comparison compared to this, you know, so going back five years here, it was going up and now went down the last two for general fund. But that means we got more of it in the state aid side. Capital outlay fund was pretty status quo. Special education was going up, 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 because they were raising it, and then they dropped it this year. From one, I think it was from one-point-five-seven to one-point-three-nine. It's the minimum. This next slide talks about the general fund comparisons of where you spend that, what was it, five million dollars, five million, seventy-nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, five million.
Three million of it is salaries, a million of it's benefits, so of the five million, four million, almost four million of the salaries and benefits. That's right about eighty percent.
Eighty percent, yep.
And that's what they, I mean, that's normal.
That's standard for education.
Here's percentages, salary benefits, eighty-one percent of ours. I don't miss the three up there. And then the comparisons of, it's been going up, up, we did have a little bigger jump this year in our salaries, which was anticipated. Benefits, though, are pretty much the same, transportation, purchase service. Now, here's the one where I was talking about, slide twelve with the fund balance. So in FY fourteen, it was up here above one point, over one-point-four million. And then it was going down, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, it was increasing, and this year, it's gonna go down a little bit. But we also have to stay within a certain percentage from the state side of it, so that our fund balance. I think we're thirty.
We're thirty percent?
So.
I have a thirty-two.
Yeah. Yep. And I think we've always been right around twenty-three, twenty-four, in that range percent-wise. So. It's okay to be, spend a little bit, going down a little bit this year.
That's total or general?
That, the fund balance is just general, that's just general.
Yep.
Man, sorry. Because the other ones, there's no, there's no set amount, so you have to leave it then. Other than food service, three months for five grand expenditures, but there's waivers lately, so.
So biggest impact or biggest factor is student count?
The reason why it's going down?
Those years that it went down.
Oh, that it went down?
Why was it so high?
Um, you know, we might not have taken the full amount of capital outlay and make it come down, because we were pretty high here, based on our, because it also is based on your total expenditures. So you think about, in two thousand and fourteen, we weren't even close to the total expenditures that we are now. And we were at this one-point-four amount. Does that make sense?
Yep. You probably were using your Robin Peter to pay Paul in the capital outlay flexibility, transferring it into your, or your general fund in order to have to pay, you know, human, human expenses. So therefore, you went down.
And that's the end. If anybody has any questions, any other questions? Now, this is, you're not adopting this tonight. You won't do that until the September meeting. Has to be done before October first, because we have to go send our tax request into the county auditor by October first.
Do you traditionally do it in September?
Traditionally, we can do it in August, but traditionally, we've always done it in September.
And some of the actual offers next?
We could have, yep. Possibly, yeah. I think by next one, yes. If you wanted to do it in August, we could. Now, the reason why, I mean, if anything changes from this one, the published one, you have to do a supplemental budget. So really, in my ten-year, it's never changed from this. You do the supplemental budget at the end of the year to adjust the functions, if there's any that were off. We, we never made any major decisions between, from now to September to adjust it.
When's it published?
It's always published for this hearing.
So it was in there?
Yes, it was in the paper already.
Yep, here.
So anything from that published amount needs to be a supplemental budget to adjust it.
That happens at the end of the year.
And all those, as far as the levies and stuff, you know, that special ed levy was all budgeted as the minimum amount to receive state aid, if you did receive any state aid, which we don't for special education. But there is a maximum, twenty cents higher than what we request in the SPED. So we're not at the maximum in the SPED. Capital outlay, we're roughly, with the valuation decrease, it might be closer to one-point-six. Instead, maximum's three. And general fund, where everybody's always at the max there. I don't know if school district does not.
Well, I don't think so.
So. But when you're talking about, to the public, about the taxes of the area districts, you know, and we always brought that set ranking up of how we were always on the bottom third of taxes compared to other districts in the surrounding area. And we're not changing those. We're staying where we were last year. All of this information that I gave you leaves them eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's what we asked for last year in capital outlay. Special education, we put it at the minimum. You can go lower than the minimum, but you wouldn't be eligible for certain things. One of them was, isn't there something else with the, oh, no, you gotta be at the maximum.
For SPED, you have to be max.
And we're not.
Yeah, if you were upside down in your SPED, you have to be asking for all you can ask, but that's not, it's not an issue for the Parkston School District, so. Never heard that before.
Judd, do you have any questions?
He probably didn't have this, but I don't think so.
No, he did not. I'm sorry, I didn't.
You still there, Mr. Schoenfelder? Are you still there, Mr. Schoenfelder? He's asleep.
Yep. Okay, all right, thank you, Craig. All right, next on the agenda is conflict of interest. I don't see anything listed, nothing new has come up. Number seven is approved consent agenda. A is approved financial reports, B is approved main minutes, and C is approved claims. Need a motion to...
Yep, we do, but I want to put one thing out to you. Craig and I talked about this and, or what, 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 here, that's, Mr. Well, can I borrow this? So, this document here, this is typically a financial report. It comes in every one of your packets moving forward. So, Craig and I feel that this is something that we should pull out of the consent agenda. It shouldn't be, consent agenda means that whatever's on there, you need a motion, you need a second, approve it. No, no conversation, discussion. This needs to become a better practice on our, our part, we feel, to bring attention to where we're at monthly in your funding, in your funds. So, we're not doing that today because we've, you've just had this conversation with the budget. But plan on this being, coming out of your consent agenda, having another line item on your agenda as far as financial reports. Does that make sense? I just wanted to draw your...
Can I make another request on that sheet?
Yep.
We put it at the top.
Okay.
I always have a hard time finding it.
In the packet?
In the middle.
Yep, absolutely, I can make that note. Craig, you...
Put it on the first, like, right away, the first thing?
Yeah.
Or right after the...
At the top of the financial stuff like this, I mean, though. The very first thing you guys get in your packet typically is probably the bills.
Oh, she didn't put it on there, she put it on the green.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It used to be. G and A was first this time, trust and agency, and then you got your activity fund report, yeah.
We'll put it first. Right after Mr. making his notes, yeah.
I need a motion to approve. So moved. I'll second it.
Did we do a motion on your regular agenda? Who did that?
We, we did it, actually. We did it because I think we're going to acknowledge it in the bottom. I'll do it again in the bottom. Oh, you...
Because you adjourned.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
For the first one?
For the first part, for the first.
Oh, oh, yeah, we didn't do that, did we?
We just skipped right to, you just skipped right to the budget. So, before the consent agenda, let's do the agenda. So, Lindsay, you want to approve?
So moved, yep, that's fine. And I'll second it.
And Nebo approved the agenda?
Yep.
With no changes.
So, we'll do the changes in the second part?
Yeah. And then now we gotta approve the consent agenda. Weber, I got moved, seconded by...
Yeah, I can second it.
Nebo? Okay. To approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Freezing bills? Hearing none, say aye.
Aye.
Or all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign?
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. So, we'll adjourn this meeting?
Should be done with this one, yeah.
Yep, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Moved by Pearl?
Second.
Seconded by Leishner to adjourn at seven oh four. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Okay, adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay.
For stepping up this year, we appreciate it. Best of luck in your...
Thank you, I'm sure we'll be in contact.
Your new endeavors.
Can I leave this here with you?
Yep.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
See you later. All right, we will move to number nine, call to order, new organizational meeting.
Yes, I, I do that now.
Okay.
Scott, can you come up and have a chair? First thing we need to do is we need to have you guys take your oaths again, Jill and Scott. Um, well...
You can sit right there where Lindsay was?
It's, it's church, so Jed Schoenfelder sits there, so.
So, Jill, I'll have you read this oath here and then sign on the asterisk line there. You can sit, that's fine.
Okay. I, Jill Nebo of the Parkson School District, number thirty-three point three, have been elected as a board of education member of the Parkson School District in Hutchinson County of South Dakota. Do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership.
So, sign right there. Turringer, you have to say? There you go, Scott.
I, Scott Turringer of the Parkson School District, number thirty-three dot three, having been elected as a board of education member of the Parkson School District in Hutchinson County of South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of the school board membership.
Just have to sign by the...
Welcome.
I remembered to change those from elected to, from appointed because the last, second time ever I had to do that.
All right.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda.
We got, well, we got, you got ten and eleven. So, eleven is your oath of, you did, we had a quorum, Craig.
Yep, Jill did that.
So, and then you just took your oath, so that was number eleven. So, now you're at twelve and that's still under your direction, Craig, so.
So, we need to elect a president and vice president. In the past, we voted, do you want to nominate and then, or do you want to vote on them? How do you guys want to do it?
I'll nominate Jill.
You nominate Jill for president? Does that have a unanimous nomination? Okay, so I need a motion?
Well, should ask her if she wants to.
Yeah, I love to, I've enjoyed tremendously being president of the school board. Matt was pretty quick to...
So, we got moved by Leishner.
Does Jed have a say in this because he's, it's a quorum? Can we do it with only four? Do you have to have...
He's here.
Well, is he here?
There he was, I heard him.
Go ahead, Jed.
Yeah, I decide I can vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you could hear us and you're still there.
So, moved by Leishner, seconded by Pearl to nominate, to unanimously nominate Jill Nebo for president of the Parkson School District.
And you just, and you had a second by Mr. Pearl?
Mm-hmm.
And then you just called a question.
So, then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign? Motion carried, Jill Nebo is now the president. So, now we need to do that same thing. Is there a nomination for the vice president?
Matt.
I second.
Okay, Nebo nominated, or moved by Nebo. Matt, are you okay with that? That's a task. Right, you're all right? Okay. And seconded by Schoenfelder to unanimously nominate Matt Leishner as the vice president of the Parkson School District. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign? Motion carried. All right, Jill, I will turn it back over to you.
All right. Thanks.
Agenda with changes.
All right, well, due number thirteen is approve agenda and changes to agenda. There's a long list here, so bear with me. A is designate legal depository and official newspaper. We recommend Farmer State Bank as depository and the Parkson Advance as the official newspaper. B, establish board pay per diem mileage rate. We recommend board pay remain seventy-five dollars per meeting and committee meeting, not to extend fif, exceed fifteen hundred dollars for the year and per diem and mileage at state rate of forty-two cents. C, appoint manager of local funds, which is a business manager, Craig Bruning. D, appoint manager of federal funds, superintendent Pat McKinnon. E, designate legal counsel for the Parkson School District, Brayley Law with retainer of two thousand dollars. F, set bond for business manager, we recommend fifty thousand dollars. G, designate business manager authority to invest funds, business manager Craig Bruning. H, authorize certain fund allowance and expenditures. We recommend continuing with the seventy-five hundred dollars in the impressed fund, five hundred dollars for the change fund, and fifty dollars for petty cash. I, set election date, we recommend the second Tuesday in April, which will be April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. J, list all employees and salaries to be in compliance with SDCL six dash one dash ten. This is publishing all school employees' salaries in the local newspaper. K, approve reimbursement rates, the rates are included on the enclosed document. L, authorize use of signature stamps for president and business manager. Authorize vice president to sign in president's absence. M, approve Vera Pace membership, this is a purchasing cooperative used by the district. N, authorize superintendent to approve open enrollment applications. This allows superintendent to sign accept, sign accept and sign applications in a timely manner. O, establish meeting dates and times. We recommend the second Monday of each with the start of each month, I think that's what it says, with the start of time of six thirty PM unless amended on a monthly basis by the school board. P, designate truancy officer, age discrimination compliance officer, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance officer, section five oh four compliance officer and title, what is that?
Nine.
Nine, geez, compliance officer. Superintendent has a designation of truancy officer, age discrimination compliance officer, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance officer and title nine compliance officer. Building principals are the five oh four compliance officer. Q, approve title three consortium membership. This is a statewide membership to support English language learners. R, approve audit quote, this is for auditing purposes for Schoenfish and company for ten thousand two hundred dollars. S, designate bus route pickup points pursuant to SDCL thirteen dash twenty-eight dash forty-five. A, quote unquote, receiving school district and the resident school district shall annually approve the pickup locations for those students within any incorporated municipality. We recommend using the same established locations as in past years in the Tripp Delmont School District, Tripp, Dakota Plains Elevator, and Delmont, the former Agland Co-op building. Need a motion to approve if there are no questions.
I have some questions.
Okay.
On E, I don't have any, I understand Brayley Law Firm, but Rodney Freeman, is he included in this whole scenario? I know, Mr. McKinnon, that you probably want to do negotiations if I understand correctly, but we're, are we still going to try and get legal advice from Rodney?
That is my intention.
Okay.
I can't speak to the, that's what we've done in the past.
Is that, was that part of this, Craig, or not? Was not?
Never has been.
That's kind of like on an as needed basis, right, or something like that?
But we paid, we paid him.
So, the time you've used this for, my understanding, is when we had a situation in one of the colonies one time and there's the mediator and now the, when you had a board, I can't remember what happened. But Brayleys were, I do know, I can, I'm just, I know what happened out there, but I mean, in the process, he's like the mediator between the board and if something were to happen with somebody, a student per se, and the parents or whatever. That's when we've used this. That was not a Rodney Freeman deal then. Do you remember that? You're probably the only one on the board when that happened. So, and, and then for me to go up there and ask for advice of helping me with, which may happen a little bit more in the future, collecting bad debts or uncollectible accounts in the food service department or preschool areas. And what it is, we use that and then he doesn't charge us for the first two thousand.
Because the reason I'm bringing it up is that Rodney, that's what he does. That's his, that's his, that's his law practice, his school, and so, I think...
But I don't know if Rodney does retainer fees with anybody.
No, no retainer fee. It's billable hours on a per needed basis. And I'll be honest with you, he's at a point in his career, the conversations and the emails that I have with him in the short year that I've been here and I've talked to him several times this year. Have you ever seen a bill, Craig?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's once a year. He gives it to us at the end. It's for every fifteen minute phone call.
Yeah, he keeps track of his...
Every email.
But we don't budget it or anything like that?
I budget it.
It's in your budget.
It's in the budget under...
Budget.
Um, yeah, it's in the budget. There's a line item, a coda line item for him.
The only recommendation I would have for there, you missed, for you, Mr. Pearl, is to designate legal counsel and put Brayley, Brayley Law Office and Kaufman Law Office and...
Freeman Law Office.
Or, excuse me, Freeman Law Office. So, it's cited in your, your minutes if that's a viable compromise for that.
Sure. I, I just want to, I, I, I just want to make sure we're still trying to use Rodney.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's fine. J, is there any magic in time on election date? Because we had June. I see here we got, we're going to...
You mean aye for the election date?
Yeah.
The reason why it's moved up to April is if we were to have an election, it's easier to, so next year won't be a primary year. And the city has elections always the second Tuesday in April. So, if we have an election, we would run it with the city's election as well.
In conjunction.
In conjunction with it and then share the expenses with them rather than the county that we did this year. It was easy this year because the county, there was a primary election going on.
Okay.
The other time I had the election, there was nothing else going on and that's why I was out at the school and nobody showed up.
Then we had that conversation with the city and they were, I think, at the time, we had the...
The old city finance officer was okay with that.
That would be a great support or an asset only from a turnout perspective as well to get a couple of things going. The sharing of the expenses was probably the lead. And the other one is neither of that, but workers do, I mean, so workers can kind of help with that process as well.
So. R, with...
The audit?
Yep.
So, does he give us a quote at the end of the audit each year? He gives us a quote?
No, he just, they gave it to us last week.
Oh.
And it's one up in the rationale is the federal funding that they got to keep track of. It's just...
It's a little high because of that. It's got, if you have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal revenue, then you have to, they, the auditors have to do an additional, they have additional work to do on it that they have to file and stuff because of the federal government and that's why it's a little higher. The last two years have been higher because of that.
It's probably another day, they're gonna have two days worth of work that they gotta go through to make sure that we're in compliance.
So, he's giving you a quote for what he'll do at the end of the year?
That quote is for what he's going to do here this September, whenever we have our audit for next, for this. It's for the FY twenty-two audit, correct?
Yes.
And then the last one, do we still, if I remember correctly, we still need state approval on those pickup sites or not?
Only if you're in disagreement.
Okay.
So, and I sent this, I sent this to their leadership and I've, I've had that conversation with Mr. Hurt down there and even last year, I mean, he's assured me that...
We're cool.
We're cool.
Okay.
So, I know that always hasn't been a cool thing, but...
Need to ask a question.
Yeah. That, it's a good question.
Okay, so we're going to add to E?
Craig, sorry to interrupt, Jill. Do, is anybody, because your reimbursements rate, Craig, Craig, did you, did you have anything?
There was nothing.
To address on that reimbursement rate?
Um, the Reds are the changes.
Okay, so if you saw that?
I looked at that, yeah.
And that was more in compliance with what?
Was that a line item on here?
Yeah.
Which one was it?
Reimbursement rates, that would be number, which one was it, Craig? Uh, K, approved reimbursement rates.
Okay.
Okay. So, if you look at twenty twenty-three, you got a few Reds there, so.
And most of it has to deal with the hourly, you know, if we, since we moved the wage up from minimum wage or not minimum wage, starting wage of twelve, oh, five, fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
And we can leave the food service substitute at twelve bucks. So, we moved that up to where the starting wage would be.
So, we still having problems? I maybe should assume that. Are we, are we still okay with the people coming up for timers and line judges and reps and...
Can, are we, are we competitive, Mr. Fisher? They paying our people to do that or are we behind the eight ball?
Uh, I think we're ma, I don't know. Craig and I have looked and talked about it a lot, it's kind of a...
Because these are just, these are just local people, Mr. Fisher, that we're talking about right here. Yes, we do not put, we do not set the basketball officials, the wrestling officials, volleyball, all them.
Yeah, because that's typically in your budget for those co-cur...
This is, this is the people that, local people for junior high events and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, it just depends where you're at, I think, and where you're asking them. Closer you get to see balls, I think they play a little bit more.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're probably fairly competitive with the schools here.
Most people who do it are going to be there anyway and they enjoy doing it.
My goodness, if they are, probably not, eh? Those that work every game.
I'm speaking for myself, I guess. Sorry, shouldn't say it, I guess. I'm speaking for myself when I say that. I like doing it, so.
We need people like you.
The other red on there was the student meals. Guys, um, Mr. Yosin, and this was actually not ever part of this. It was always just staff meals until this year. It used to be five bucks a meal. Kids got nothing. And last year we went to the, I just, Mr. Yosin and I talked and we just, well, it said meals. So we gave the students that, but then we got the state wrestling and the state volleyball cash and I'm like, holy cow. It was a lot. I know there's a lot of people, but it was over three grand each. And so we bumped it down a little. And now those meal reimbursement rates are the state rates. Six, 14 and 20 is the state rate.
In 2022.
In 2022.
Do you have to keep it at that?
No, most schools' students don't get paid as what the adults do.
Yeah.
Most of them have 7, 7, 7. Like I looked up beer spurs, beer spurs last year was 7, 7, 7. They got $21 a day. Well, we're still gonna give them 30. Just not 40 dollars a day. And a lot of times we try to find hotel rooms with breakfasts in them already so they can, so they're not purchasing a breakfast.
So is that chummy bit enough?
What's that?
Is that chummy bit enough?
Now, last year was, I can guarantee you those kids, some of those kids brought money home.
We had money left over.
Okay.
And part of the notion behind that is when you're going to those types of, those levels of events, you know, the volleyball tournament very well attended, a lot of people donated, businesses donated, they had hospitality rooms. The kids typically, they fed the kids, you know, at least a meal a day, you know, and the, the community gets together and everybody else eats too, kind of a deal. So, I mean, the rates, Craig and I conversation is, it is a, there's nothing wrong with the rates that you're suggesting faster getting 30 dollars to pay, so, and if we find that.
15 was definitely not enough two years ago.
Yeah.
Because I remember.
Yep, but we've never had it as you guys approving it, so that's why this is the first time you're approving that, so.
Good?
And we're talking about.
All state chorus, any state activity up?
We're not talking about preschool right now.
Nope, nope, scroll up, scroll up, right there.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
So if you go, you know, all state choir, all state band, um, any South Dakota high school activities sponsors state events. They get money for. It's not, um, not every event that a kid goes to. I mean, if they go to the music, large group music contests in Platte, they're not getting money for that.
Okay. Any other questions on the action items or the consent agenda?
That's your reorganizational information.
Jed, do you have any questions? Okay, we'll move on.
We need.
Oh, yeah.
Need a motion.
Oh, yeah, do you want to add to that then? Mr. adding Mr. Freeman on to, are we adding that?
We need to take that off the consent agenda if we want to do that and make it a separate item. And that's fine, we can do that if you want to do that. Let me take that off there, John?
Yes, I'd like to.
Good.
Unless the rest of the board does it.
He just won't have a retainer listed, correct? It'll just be his name will be additional for.
Where's that one at?
It's E?
Item.
E designate legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
Okay. So that has to be its own motion and approve, okay. So can we do?
The rest.
The consent agenda, I need a motion to approve all except for E.
Did we do a motion? Once again, Jill, I think you missed the motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Yeah, there we go.
Did we? Me and I ain't batting zero tonight, okay.
That's all right, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
You just started reading it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have, yeah, which is fine.
Okay.
To approve that.
So the only addition was.
For 13, we need to approve agenda, change the agenda. Okay, but we need to add in, that's where we need to add in H?
Yes, which was the, our home reimbursement rates.
Tuition rates.
Tuition rates, yes.
And then we also need to add personnel to the executive.
Yes, and personnel. So I need a motion to approve that agenda first with those two changes.
13, yeah.
So.
Leishner and seconded by Prohl.
Okay, so then we'll move, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Now we need a motion for those consent agenda items with the exception of.
E.
E.
Okay, oh, so move.
Are you following, Mr. Frey?
It's usually more organized than this, I promise. Tonight's a little out of order, sorry.
I got moved by Neeble and seconded by Prohl. Any other discussion for the consent agenda with the removal of letter E? Any non-favor say aye?
Aye.
Post, post same sign, motion carried. So now let's go down and do a motion right away forward, last one.
E?
Yes.
Motion to approve designate legal counsel for the Parkston School District. Brayley Law with retainer of $2,000. And Rodney Freeman, additional law, legal counsel. Support or something like that?
That's perfect.
Yep. Okay, need a motion to approve.
Moved by Leishner?
Seconded.
Seconded by Neeble. Any other discussion on that? Here and done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, we will move on to discuss.
Can I just bring up one thing real quick here before? I'm really going forward to another better practice is if you guys want to move something off the consent agenda, if we could do that prior to, let us know prior to the meeting, I think is kind of how that's supposed to go.
Okay.
And then we can talk about it. A little bit, and I don't think you're supposed to be, anything on consent agenda, like John wanted to move that off there, he would send us an email saying, hey, can we move letter E off?
So if you have any questions.
So that way to change, approve the agenda with those changes.
Then we should pull it off of there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do our best, okay.
Yeah, I know, sometimes it doesn't always happen, but.
Yep, okay.
I think that's how that's supposed to, to work.
We will move to 16 as discussion items, or I'm sorry, information discussion, staff report? No, I'm out of order.
No, you're good.
Okay.
That's fine, but I would like to.
Oh, these don't match up.
Recommend.
These don't match. This one says 16, they're different.
16.
These are 16, they're different. Do you want to do 17 discussion items? On here I have 17 discussion items, okay.
Yeah, I believe that was.
Okay, sorry, I'm off a number. So we'll do discussion items. A is Maxwell Boar and Boar Agency Insurance Review Presentation. The board will be provided an update by the Maxwell Boar Agency on the district's property and auto insurance coverages. Hi, Mike.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. In your packet you had all of this insurance stuff. I think Mike has made a little bit of a higher flyer sheet where just as you don't have to, we all have to page them all of this stuff to find out what he's referencing, so. And it's the same information essentially, but you're more condensed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so Pat just asked me to come in and kind of, some new faces, just to kind of go through, just an overview of kind of what, what we have for coverage through our commercial policy for the school. Took a big increase this year. Last year I think it was at 62,000, is that right, Craig? Premium I think was, yeah, 62, 355 total premium. The renewal this year is 82,900. 19,5 of that renewal is on the property side of things. Increase in the property premium valuations, this and that. Part of it is, uh, part of it's on the replacement cost estimator that they run for us each year. EMC is the carrier. They run, say this is what it should be to increase the property to 100% replacement cost value. When they ran that this year, I guess going back last year when we, when we looked at the property values, we even went, I think it was 15 or 20% higher than what they said the values were because of some of the inflation costs. This year when they sent it out, I believe it's on page three here, they ran it, last year we were at 22,900 for our school, for the school structure. That's not including the football field, the greenhouse, that stuff. That's on elementary gyms and the high school. Last year we had went above what they had said at their value and we went, I think, 15 or 20% higher and we were at 22,900. When they ran that this year, it's at 88.1% of what they're saying their replacement cost value is and that's at $211.69 a square foot. Well, in talking with Pat and, uh, I guess just, and even from the company perspective, their replacement cost estimator gets recycled one time a year and they can't go in and change that throughout the year from the company perspective. It's on a program, so they set that value and it goes throughout the year. Well, they've had four changes in increases in construction materials, whatever it is since that point. So there, when they sent the renewal out, they said, we need to bump our coverage to keep the coverage without being in a co-insurance penalty, which at 100% insured, they said you have to go to 26 million on the school building, which is a little over $3 million more than what we had last year. Well, in talking with Pat and the company, and I had put those in the back here that we can look at, but to go to $250 a square foot would bump our school building up to about 30 million. And to go to $300 a square foot where Pat says that's where quotes or estimates are coming in at, that bumps the school building up to about 36 million to replace it. And we're at 22 right now. It's how crazy this market, I, I guess the, the building costs, construction equipment, you name it, it's crazy. I think Craig and I were looking back through what our property costs were over the last five years and in 18 it was 22,850 for the coverage on our property. But back then, I don't have the number, but I'm guessing we were insured for about 13 million or 14 million on our school, the whole thing, five years ago. Now we're looking at insuring it at 30 or 36 million dollars going forward. So on that, just wanted to talk a little bit about, if you go through to the next, the page after that estimate, it's a statement of values page, just to go through the property here real quick. So, um, this first one up here, this is property, this is personal property at the alternative schools. So we'll have three of those at about $28,740. That would be any materials, it'd be at the colonies and then also at, this one, the top one is our home. And so that's any of the tables, chairs, desks, books, you name it, that those kids have over at the school, computers. That, that would be the 28, 7 is what we have for coverage if they'd have a fire over there and you lose everything in that building. The next one, the 959,138, that is the football stadium. Uh, stadium, lights, poles, bleachers, that all falls in underneath that 959,000. Okay? Property in the open, Crow's Nest, that's the one across the way, that's at 20,000. Um, and then the track property in the open of 296,840. I know the track is always one of those things that, I mean, damage a track. Well, somebody got on the track with a vehicle and decided to make it a racetrack, it would.
Yeah, the cows got out and made tracks on it, that's happened too.
Really? Yeah. So, that's why the track is listed on there. Before the track was fixed, you couldn't hurt it, it was a, you know, it was a highway. But, um, the next one, uh, that one is.
Building. Location three?
Yes. And the high school, 26, uh, oh, yeah, I was thinking 26,000. 26 million, that's what they're saying, um, they want us to renew it at, but that's at $211 a square foot, not the 250 or the 300. The personal proper, business personal property, that's 7,956,750. That's everything in here. Everything except the inland marine part, that is your electronic, the inland marine part on here, everybody always wonders what's inland marine? They think it's boats or jet skis or something for the board members, but, um, essentially what that is, that's our electronic data processing stuff. And we have $427,000 of coverage on our electronic data processing stuff. That does have a $500 deductible, so that deductible is lower on that just because some of that stuff, you had a $2,500 deductible, it might fall under that if. But that, that is the coverage for electronic data processing, the hardware, the, your servers, you name it. $500 deductible for that, if there's an off premises power interruption, that is a $2,500 deduct, that does change. A lot of commercial policies don't cover off premises generated disruption. But this one does, it just has a little bit higher, higher deductible on that. So that also includes, before we used to have more things on our inland marine like our lawn mowers, utility equipment stuff to service the grounds, but if it doesn't leave the premises, there's no need in having that on there. It's just extra cost to include that on and the rate's higher on the inland marine than it would be just to have it under the property. If you have a piece of equipment and say you're traveling, your district was set up where you had multiple locations and you're hauling a skid loader or you're hauling this or that, or you're driving something to a bunch of different sites, then that makes a difference. But when everything's in one location, it really just makes sense to have it under, under the business personal property. Generally how they come about that, that seven, almost eight million dollars, they want to see at least 20%, 20 to 25% of the building valuation, um, personal property be 25%. That's, that's what they historically in total loss scenarios, what they see from schools when they do have a total loss, that they want to have that 20 to 25% of the building value for the personal property. Uh, the next one, property in the open playground equipment, that's the stuff out here, we have 52,833. That's one that, playground equipment's another one of those things that it could be light on that. But, um, you know, depending on, on how high you want to go and what kind of damage it would take to hurt some of that playground equipment. The sign out front is 33,206. Greenhouse building, we have it 94,000, almost 95,000 right now. On the back, uh, that is the equipment shed over there for 72, 474. And then the stuff in the equipment shed would be the pool vault pits and all that stuff, right Craig?
At 26,000 there.
And then the last two are just the colony.
Property inside.
Yep. Property inside the colony buildings. What I did on the property since we're talking about that, I, I had them run different, different numbers. Uh, so at the 26 million, I also had them run different deductible options. You know, when you're, when you're starting to get to that point where you're have, 26 million is what we have on the building, but our total insured property is 35,644,000 is what our total insured property is right now. And our deductible is 2,500 right now. So they're not pushing, but they're like, you know. So they're not pushing, but they're like, you know, bumping that up, would it, would it make sense to look at some higher deductible options as well? So with that, as far as the 26 million on that one, if we bump up to a $5,000 deductible, doesn't save us a heck of a lot, it saved us about 20, what, 2,700, not even that.
Where's the amount of just, you know, this thing says 82,000. 953, that's everything.
Right on the premium.
59.
59 is what the premium is on the building as, per their recommendation of the 26 million on the school.
$5,000 deductible would be 57,1.
57,1 for the $5,000 deductible, and 54,369 for the $10,000 deductible. Now, $10,000 deductible, that, I mean, you start getting there, now you're looking at most of the smaller, little claim things, you're eating all of it. But truthfully, anymore, do you have, I mean, at a $5,000 deductible, not many claims fall under $5,000 anymore if you have any amount of damage at all. On the 30 million, which is the next one in your packet, okay, this just goes through, this statement of values is the exact same, except I just changed the, the building here up to 30 million, and that's roughly $250 a square foot for our structure of reconstruction. On that, to, to go to 30 million at a $5,000 deductible, it'd be 64,000, so it'd be an additional, not quite $5,000 to bump that up to 30 million.
To let the personal property inside alone.
Yep, that, that stayed the same. Yep. Because I think it still fell under their guidelines of the percentage for that. To go to the $10,000 deductible, it'd be 61.8, and they ran a $25,000 deductible, just because that's, that's the highest that they go for their deductibles, at least at this level of where we're insuring. That would drop it down to 54,733 at a $25,000 deductible.
Does a 30 million?
What?
Doesn't say that.
Yeah, it's a...
Oh, it's up there, yep, yep, I got it, got it, got it.
It didn't, snuck off the page.
No, that's okay.
With the 36 million, I mean, it's, obviously, it's expensive, and it's, it just continues to go up. At the 36 million, at a $5,000 deductible, it's 72,133 a year. And the 10,000 deductible would be at 69,000, and the...
25.
25 is at 61...
At 36 million.
Yep, at 36 million. And just kind of breaking that down, I kind of was going through, you start seeing those dollar figures, and it's, it's a lot. But when you start seeing the total property covered, so at 36 million, we'd be, our total property coverage would be 45,600, 575,000. If you break that down at the $5,000 deductible, it'd be equivalent to about, almost $1,600 per million dollars of coverage. You know, if, so if you, if you look at it like a homeowner policy, a lot of people pay $1,600 for $300,000 of coverage. So I get it, it's a lot, but also trying to put into perspective, that's a, if there was a total claim, it would, it's a lot of money.
Two things.
Yep.
The reason why I had, Mike do this conversation that I've had with Craig, one, first and foremost, you've had loss here, in the last three years, you've had loss, so you're going to pay for it. When lightning struck, flooded your elementary school, you're going to pay for it. They paid for it, but you're going to pay for it. So that was one of the rationales for, without even having this conversation, the premiums jumping up by about 20 grand. If we were just leaving everything status quo. Craig don't like it, but that's just...
Mainly because it never goes back down if you do have 10 years in a row that are cut.
Yeah, so it's taking one bad event, throw in the 10 years, 20 years that you had of good housekeeping, good sound practice, things like that, everything's going good, and he's right, because none of these things are going to go backwards. You're not going to get a rebate on any of this stuff two years from now, but you watch your premiums go back down, it's not happening. So I don't know if there's an answer for that, it is what it is. The conversation with Mike, then I had about these other replacement costs, based on what we've seen here, and we've listened to an architect, we've had a couple people visit, you know, we have this project potentially coming forth. If there's something happened to this facility right now, the whole footprint, it says replacement cost, you're not getting it, you're not going to get it back for what they have it insured for, it's not going to happen. So my question to Mike was, is okay, who's going to win? Because they're going to say, "Ah, placement cost, 26 million." Okay, according to who? And a general contractor comes in here, "I'll rebuild it, 36." Well, who's going to pay the other 10? So we started having that conversation about what should the property be insured for? But the thing that it's, causes some angst, what's your premium? And that's kind of where the rubber meets the road, so that's the proposals tonight to you guys, is, and the question that you have to answer is, do we leave it on the first proposal, is 26 million, we're in compliance with what EMC wants out of the deal? Or do you want to bump things up to 30 million dollars worth of, of coverage of 36, and then do your deductibles, 5, 10, or 25? Which ones do you want to do? So, I mean, I know that's a lot thrown at you, but I think it's an important enough topic, because we're, we're pushing in, in some respects, you know, 70 grand, you know, for a premium, for your coverage of your facilities and all components of it. It's, Craig and I am too, used to paying between 30 and 40, you know, you don't really look at it, huh, okay, yeah, I get that, now we're like, holy smoke, 70 grand? It's kind of a...
It's already, yeah, the last two years.
It causes you some angst.
It'll be double, over-doubled in the last two years.
Is it off the, is it off the norm?
What's that?
Is it off the budget? Itemized in your...
Last year's amount? Not this amount?
Which was what?
Yeah.
What was last year's amount?
Oh, you want to know what last year's amounts were?
I'm guessing 30 and 40.
So being at that 26 million...
40,395 for the property only, last year.
So what, what, being at that 26 million, where they're saying we need to be at, what that protects us from is, when we insured at that amount, they're saying that's what replacement cost is, so if we have a partial loss, say it takes half the building, or part of it, they're not going to come in and say, "You're not, you're not insured to the 100% to value", because that's what they had told us we had to be at, but if there's a total loss, they're going to pay you what we have insured for. So, yeah.
So when you were paying that 40, how, how much was the...
Coverage?
Yeah.
It was at 22, 22 million.
The year before that, it was 29.9.
Yep.
That's what I mean, in the last two years, it's doubled, because it wasn't 29.9 two years ago.
Right.
But part of it is the loss.
Right. So over the, from 2013 to 22 to current, over that nine, 10-year period, we're at about 105, 110% loss ratio over the combined, what we've paid in for premiums and what has been paid out in loss over 10 years.
Because that lightning strike cost us 400, 400-some thousand, right?
460, I think, thousand in the one claim. And generally, they don't, even though it feels like it, Craig, they don't try to get it all back in, like, just to get it all back.
In one fell swoop.
Right, but they're going to hit, and so the combination of this year is, you have, you have the rate increases that every school is getting because of all the losses over the last couple years with the schools. So just a normal rate increase, the increase in coverage saying you have to go to this, and then we've also moved, so you know, we talked about never coming back down if we had 10 years of good loss. So EMC has two different companies under the parent company that they're able to write schools in. Any line of business they write, they're in two different tiers of companies. Well, if you don't have losses, you're in the best-tiered company with the best rating structure. Well, we have fallen out of that rating structure after the, after the big loss, and so that's another, so it's, that double whammy, triple whammy on that.
Right, when you're indifferent, they consider you a liability due to a natural, due to a natural disaster, which you have no control.
And every, everything we've claimed in the last 10 years have been natural, between hail.
Right.
The last two hailstorms and lightning.
Yeah. Not the sit well, but, and the other thing that, just so you're aware, you're like, "Okay, let's go shop besides EMC." There isn't, but, there isn't.
Northern state of South Dakota.
EMC is the only one that will underwrite school.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, sorry.
Continental Western used to write schools, and they have pulled out of the school market last year, they, they've kind of been in and been out, back and forth, but they pulled out last year. So not only that, now all of a sudden, yes, you have the captive, they're the only one, the only player in the game right now, but also for them, they've taken the, in those storms we had in May, they've taken all of the brunt of the blow for all of the schools through here in the losses. So, yeah, there, there isn't really any other options as far as school writers right now in the state of South Dakota. As soon as they are, we'll definitely quote it out and, and get you, get you the most competitive offer, but right now, and even before Continental Western pulled out, EMC was...
They beat them.
Over and over again. I mean, it got to the point where they just, they're like, "Why are we even quoting it again?", because they just weren't competitive.
So what you're saying is, we have to be at least at 26?
You have to be at the 26, but then the other two options are saying, "This is what we're getting from contractors, bids, this and that, of being at least at 250, or the 300 is, is what it's looking like it's going to." You know, the, the problem with, not problem, but one of the issues with commercial policies is, there's no inflation guard on it. So on a lot of homeowner's policies, there's a built-in inflation guard of like 120% of your replacement cost. If you build it exactly like it is, and, and it now all of a sudden costs more, there's that little inflation guard. Commercial policies don't have an inflation guard. They are what they are when you pick that dollar figure. You can make that change throughout the year, but when you pick that dollar figure, that's, that's what you get on that, so.
So if we do go forward and move, or, and build that building, is there insurance on it while you're building that, or does that fall under all of this?
So, well, generally, the contractor would have that...
That's their liability.
Until...
Their bond.
They're done, and they have you sign off on it, we're done, and that's when that building gets moved over to the, the commercial policy.
There's probably something old, you know, I didn't know that.
But...
You have thoughts? John, go ahead.
My thoughts are, I, I don't know where construction costs are going to go, we're not going, old lumber right now is taking a dip.
Little bit, yeah.
Which, which is, I think it's going to be, I think we're going to have a lot of uncertainty here for another year, two or three. So, so I don't like to be underinsured personally, and, and so I'm thinking more of the 30 million, but then let's do a higher deductible, so, so it gets within our budget, so even if we go to a 25,000 deduct. At least, at least we got the, have the money in case the big loss hits.
If you had an event, John is right, in my opinion, John is right, Craig, he would agree, you're disagreeing with that, but can you absorb a $25,000 deductible if you had an event? I mean, you have...
We had two events this year, and neither one of them got to that amount, so.
So we wouldn't have had claims.
Your sign out front didn't get that high, and neither did the pole vault pit.
How much were they?
22 and 24.
Oh, so 10 is more likely to be able to be covered.
Well, I'm just saying, you would, you would just be paying for those things yourselves.
You would. But my point to you is, within the budget, do you have the mo, do you have the money to absorb that?
If we would have had to, and we didn't have...
25,000.
Twice?
Well, you, yeah, it would have been two different...
Yeah, exactly. Would we have had the money to do that?
So we'd have to spend 50,000 if your capital, well, yeah, our capital right now, reserves would be spending it.
John's made a suggestion, I mean, that's, that's the conversation, so.
And you know, I, I guess going, just my two cents, if you don't, going to the 25, yes, I, I agree with you, John, it's, that is, but you are then, even at the 10,000, you're eliminating the smaller claims, where you're saying, "No matter what the claim is, we're going to eat the 25,000, and it is what it is."
Because we won't.
But we're spending, we're spending $30,000 more on premiums than what we were a year ago.
Right.
Right off the bat, so you're behind 30,000.
Right. No, good point.
What were you going to say, Matt?
Well, I definitely agree with going to at least the 30, and I mean, if the building is going to cost 36 million to rebuild, I would, you know, I would, you know, maybe consider that. 25,000 deductible seems like a lot, but I mean, you go out and compare the 10,000 with the 5,000, and there's not that much difference between, between those two, but you are giving $10,000 back if you go to the 25,000, so, you know, that wipes out half, or not quite half of one claim there.
Over these last three years, we had nothing, everything else was vehicles.
Right. And the vehicles are on their own separate deductibles for those, so...
Hey, that's, that's the problem, is it just went up so much, but they're from three different deals, and it's the flood and two hail deals that, just this year, everything else was vehicles on that list, if I remember right.
And the, and we had the one wind where it ruined the bleachers, right after the lightning strike, we had a...
It was at the same time, they flipped the bleachers over on the track.
On the track.
So when does, when, when does this take effect, Mike?
This, well, 7-1 is when it, when it did take effect, and so we're at the, we're at the 26 million right now, but then it's, what, where do you want to go with it? Now, if you get estimates for putting up a building, and the architect comes in mid-year and says, "Listen, we're, it's, it's $300 a square foot to build this thing," we can, we can make that jump up higher at that point, mid-year, if you said, "Yep, we want to go to this." We can, we can raise that up throughout the year.
So you're not locked in a year?
You're not locked in, so right now, you're not locked into that. If you want to go at another school, call and tell me, they were going to the lower mountain, and those storms were coming in, and they said, "You know what, let's go up to the higher amount, because..."
Never say never.
Right.
I mean, it's unfortunate, I mean, but don't, I mean, don't never say never.
Don't.
I mean, it's just...
I would agree. I mean, every roof could come off this place.
Scott, you have thoughts?
If you look at the 36 million at a 25,000 deductible, it's the same premium as the 30 million with the 10,000. So if we want with higher coverage and a higher deductible, I mean, pull a higher deductible, we get more coverage.
And I don't know if you're underinsured or overinsured at 30 million or 36, I'm just going based on with all the conversation that we've had, and where construction is going, and listen to the vendors that we've worked with, and telling us, and you're right, John, some of the materials have may have come down and flattened out a little bit, but in order to build something, brick and mortar, I don't care, wood, whatever, I mean, you're somewhere between 250 and 300 dollars a square foot.
I don't think they're coming down for a lot.
Right.
Steel is, steel is going up.
The, the underwriter did tell me that with a lot of the losses, they were seeing in that 250, maybe 260 range with the repairs to a lot of these, you know, she says, you know, we, the closest thing they generally see to a total loss would probably be like Burkhead a few years ago, where the tornado hit the, hit the school, but she even said, "Cast..." Castlewood, not a total loss, but it had extensive damage, but not necessarily a total loss, but, but yeah, she said right now is about 250 is what they're seeing for bids coming in to fix what they had.
Jed, are you there? Do you have thoughts? So I feel like we're saying 30, do we guys, and the consensus of the 30 feels?
I feel comfortable, more comfortable at 30.
Do we have a feeling on which deductible? Obviously not the five, but.
I'm not gonna fight you guys on the 10 or 25.
And there isn't an in-between. They go from 10 to 25.
Well, if we do whatever we do here, let's just not put it on the back burner, let's just keep it out front and start to get prices for something, or Mike, if you hear something, let us know and we can, we can make changes, but.
I'm just trying to give it something because we know our premiums more than what our budget is. What was the budget again?
It breaks it up into different areas.
It's part of this 328,000 right here is what it is.
So you can change it as often as you'd like?
Yeah, you can make changes to this throughout the year.
So like if we had a loss under 25 and we're worried about another, we could change it then to the 10,000 deductible with the.
You pay more premium than.
Yeah.
Pay the difference of what threw it earlier in the years.
But at least then you'd be covered if you had a loss over that again, right? Like if you had a loss bigger than 10? Or would that meet your 10,000 then if you had?
No, it's not like.
Yeah.
It's not medical where you can.
It's per event.
Darn it!
Ah, shoot, that's too bad. Okay.
That one will apply.
Now you're moving on to the next one.
But it's better than another 15, I guess, but.
Yeah, so you can make that change throughout the year. You can increase the values, you can.
Somebody needs to make a motion, A level at A deductible and see where that goes, so.
Well, let's do 30 at.
Put, put it in a motion.
Jed, do you have thoughts?
Uh, no, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead. We did it 30 with, do you guys wanna do 25 or 10?
10,000 deductible, your premium is here. You get a 25,000 deductible, your premium is $7,000 difference, and there's a $15,000 difference in deductible.
So it'd be two years' worth of no.
Two years' worth of claims.
Of no claims.
To make up the difference.
So rest to go with the 10, huh?
That's what I thought, yeah.
Am I looking at that right?
That's the problem, it's the last.
Looking at that crystal ball and.
Out of the last 10 years, we've had two, three.
Three. And with the, with the, the way the wind and weather's been acting lately, who knows?
But the thing is, there's, we don't, here's the other problem, is we don't have very many things.
That are under.
Outside that are under $25,000.
So you're saying you wanna do 25?
You have the scoreboard out there, you have the sign out front.
Okay, we'll go with 25, 30 at 25.
Craig, what do you recommend?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, that's just, there's not, I mean, the things that got damaged in the last hailstorm.
Right.
When he went around the whole thing, I mean, there's not, this is brick building. I mean, the screens were minimal, the.
Everything is. And a roof is steel.
And so basically, you gotta take a chance of replacing the score, in my opinion, the scoreboard and sign out front.
And on, on the roof stuff, there is the cosmetic roof limitation where it's gotta be broke or leaking to.
Right.
So really.
So 25,000, I mean, you're just taking a chance on a couple things, is all it is. That's why I don't.
Okay. Let's do 30 at 25 then.
20.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I'm fine with it.
Can you come up with any other thing outside that would?
Not off the top of my head, I can't.
And really, to be honest, with the pole ball pits? If it wasn't for the track meet?
Other than your, your greenhouse.
That would have been fine, because that would have been put away, but it happened the day of a track meet. I mean, it was just bad timing. And the greenhouse is at 94,000 and the hail didn't damage that.
Yeah, it didn't. I don't know how, but it didn't.
So there's, and the roofs are tin.
Yeah.
So it's not damaging the roofs, because that's all gonna be cosmetic damage and they're not gonna give you anything for that anyway, because it's not gonna leak.
Okay.
So 25,000, I mean.
Okay.
That's right.
And you have reserve funds.
Yep.
I know Craig doesn't like to mess with those, but in, in one event type of deal where it was, you had to pay the $25, you put it, you put the, submitted the loss and it came up to 24,000, whatever, well, then it's just a small.
You're gonna pay for it out of your savings account and be done with it.
Okay. So we'll make a motion for 30 million with a $25,000 deductible.
So far, Sean Felder said something about moving, but is he all right with that?
He's, he, yeah, that's, he said he was gonna make a motion, yeah.
Good. So I need a second.
I'll second.
First time I've turned. Move by Sean Felder, second by Turner to, how do I want the word? Set quote from EMC for 30 million in property value, right?
Yeah, of the building. I mean, maybe that's what you wanna put in there, because that actually, 30 million, that would.
Property.
That would bump the total insured value to.
Yep. That's the very first sheet, so.
39.6.
Add a $25,000 deductible.
Oh, yeah. 39.6 is what the total insured property would be for everything.
I just put property value.
Now, just to, just to go over, to have done discussing that, just your general liability, some of that stuff, we have a million dollars per occurrence, 2 million aggregate, just means annually. On that, we also have, we have the umbrella that goes over and above that. So you, somebody gets hurt on your property, you're considered negligent, we'd have the million dollars and then you'd have up to 4 million dollars above that annually. Now, the, the umbrella is a 4 million aggregate, so if we used up that in one really large claim, you know, a million dollar liability deal and the 4 million in one claim, that's only good 4 million total for a year on the umbrella.
So no matter, no matter how many claims there are, it's 4 million.
4 million.
For one year.
For one year. Yep. On the general liability, it's a million dollars per occurrence, 2 million for the year on the aggregate. On the auto side, we have a million dollar combined single limit, so bodily injury, property damage, million dollars per occurrence. So that million dollars is every time you'd have an accident, hopefully not that many that would reach a million, but the umbrella does go over and above the general liability, the business auto and the linebacker. The linebacker, that's another strange name for a coverage form, but that's your guys' protection. That covers the board for their decisions you make, it's your professional liability being on the board. Just gives you that protection for all the decisions you make. The other thing, general liability, that also protects the teachers too, that does have the sexual abuse, molestation coverages in there. There's a, what do you wanna call it, like if you'd have like a, something happen at the school, a response, if you'd have a kid come in and try to harm people, this and that, emergency response.
Act of shooter.
Yes. That sort of stuff, that does fall under your general liability as well, where there is some coverages for, I think, outside of that, whether bringing people in to help manage that situation. On the business autos, we do have full coverage on all of the vehicles, I believe, except the pickup and.
Oh, man, one.
Yeah. And then that, I guess, once those come off, obviously, the, in the auction, we can remove those, that's not gonna make a huge difference in this, but.
We're gonna replace it with another one.
Okay.
Eventually.
And then the last thing is just, we do have a little bit of cybersecurity or where it, really on the cybersecurity stuff, on the, all those cyber policies, it's, it's really protecting what it's giving you is it's giving you somebody to help guide you in response if there's a data breach, where you have, if you have a data breach, you have to make notifications within certain time periods to all the people whose data was breached, and that's what the company does for you.
Is ransom in there too?
Um.
I forget on that. So they hack in, we get a notification, they shut us down, we want 50 grand and we'll cut you loose.
I believe there is some ransomware in there, I can look and see how much, how much it is, but there is some of that included.
Yeah.
In it. So it's not a ton, really, I think they, we've had to fill out a questionnaire, I think, in years past on some of that, who has access to the employee files, you know, those types of things, it's not every computer, every person. And so they do have higher limits on that. I tell you, you know, I know our property has gone up a lot, but with a lot of other commercial businesses, the cyber liability, that is skyrocketing. It's where premiums used to be $1,000 might now be $25,000 for people that don't have anything else better to do than try to hack into your system. But, but yeah, so right now, that does, we do have $50,000 limit on that, data compromise, $50,000 limit, and that does also include, yeah, the breach response, stuff like that, and there are $1,000 deductibles on those per the occurrence, so. Other than that, do you guys have any, any questions or?
On the umbrella, is that 4 million, is that high enough?
There again, I think we bumped that. A couple years ago, we went from a two, I think, $2 million umbrella up to four. I can get some numbers, it's about, it's about $1,100, I think, each time you bump up.
Like a million?
On that, every million, it's about $1,100 to bump up every million.
Generally not real expensive.
No.
Compared to other types of issues.
Right. Right. But, yeah, as far as is it enough, when is enough enough, I don't, I don't know. I, I guess I haven't seen data where, I guess if somebody was sued and what the, what the limit that they allowed, generally it's maybe what you have on your insurance policy is what they'll go after.
Uh, just, just the yearly limit, I guess, was my concern.
The 4 million?
Yeah, per year instead of per occurrence, I guess I had never realized that.
Yep. Yep, they're, they're per year on that. So, yeah.
Okay, so the 30 million is replacement, so if a tornado comes here and rips everything out, we'll get a check for 30 million.
Yes. Yep.
It's called replacement, but if it costs 40 million.
Right.
Then we're coming up with 30.
That's, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
I understand.
Yep.
So, so I noticed here too, Mike, what, what did they call our issue here with the water in the school here? What was it called?
As far as the claim?
Was it the loss?
It was, it was just a property loss.
Was that called?
I think.
What was the cause?
I thought they said it was.
No, did they call it flood coverage?
No.
No.
No, because it broke the.
Okay.
The, the lightning caused it to break the water line to come in.
I was asking, because on here it says flood, flood coverage is not covered.
Yep. Flood is pretty much excluded on every policy, whether it's homeowners, this or that, unless you have a flood policy through the national flood program.
And that's water running into your house.
Running into your house, your building, like here on, for example, last week, they had five or six inches of rain in like an hour. I know a guy that has a business there, he had a foot of water outside of his door and it went underneath, got under the footings, whatever, leached in some of the property. I don't have his business, but he was, it's flood and that's not, it's kinda like at your house, if water runs in through your window wells, because it's up so high and comes down in, that's not covered unless you have a flood policy.
Just checking because it wasn't.
Yep, that wouldn't be because it was something that caused it to break the water and then it caused the.
And those flood policies aren't generally very popular, are they, or they're not really easy to get, I mean?
I mean, we could look at a flood policy, but they would base it off of reconstruction value, so you'd have to insure, they wouldn't say, well, we wanna insure, we wanna have a flood policy for 300,000 or 400,000, you know, I, they would say, you would need to have it for 30 million.
You have to be in a flood plane, you have flood insurance?
No. You can get flood insurance anywhere, it's, it's, it's not as, relatively cheap if you're not in a flood plane, but if you're in the floodway or the actual flood plane, then it gets, then it gets expensive. You know, where we run into it the most is just on homeowners, because the bank, if you are in a flood, any part of your property's in a flood plane, the mortgage requires you have flood insurance, so.
So I got the motion from Sean Felder, second by Turner, accept the quote from EMC for combined value at 39,600,575 dollars, because that's the total combined, we'll put that one, because that's what the deal is there. And, and adjusting the deduct, and adjusting to the $25,000 deductible. Any other discussion? Harry Nunn, on favor, say it.
Hi.
Post M sign?
Post okay.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. For your time.
Yes.
I know, it was an education tonight, so yearly, a year from now, we can, we'll have a little bit better grasp of what it all means and what it is, so I don't anticipate and, you know, I mean, like the conversation that we had to tonight, so.
Yeah, and if, if you guys ever have questions, any of the board members, if you have any questions regarding the policy, by all means, don't hesitate to call or ask or whatever, so.
I just always thought it's been good practice for, in my opinion, as your leader, to let you know where you're at in all this stuff, because this is, if this is really one thing that the board should be aware of and in charge of, this is one of them right here, so.
Yeah. They're responsible.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Scott.
Good.
Ryan.
All right, we will do, do you just wanna finish up discussion items?
Yeah, let's keep going.
Yep. B is district auction sale, the board will discuss any changes needed in preparation for the dispersion auction on July 12.
Yep, tomorrow, 4:30. I would encourage you, if we get out of here tonight, I know we wanna do that, but we spent all day today, had football players come in, Coach Graves, the custodial staff, everybody did an awesome job, but you wanna see what was in this building, go drive through there and hopefully we can get rid of a lot of stuff, and if not, it's not coming back in, and I've made that statement several times, so we'll find a way to disperse of those resources, so that's all I have. I, I didn't anticipate anything, but I just wanted to make sure if we had the major changes there that was on there, that it became a discussion item, so unless somebody's got something to say about that, so.
Okay. All right, C is building addition update, the board will discuss next steps for the future building addition under consideration after an update from administration.
So that was the information that I put in your packet about the conversation that Adam and Craig and I had with Steve Jastrow, Colby McGinley and Jim Weber. In pursuing that, I thought it was a very good conversation, but I think that the point moving forward for you guys is that tonight, when we get to the, setting the committees, is that a week from this Wednesday, July 20th, there's a meeting, they requested that we have two board members there, because they wanna show, some renditions, they have some renditions that they're gonna show us, and then we're gonna get a little bit deeper into that conversation, so, but, yeah, very, very productive. I can tell you that I'm almost, Craig, if you, and Adam, I don't know if he's listening or not, but the feeling that I got, if we wanna do this right and we wanna do this where obviously money is always a concern, then the footprint is in that parking lot and it's gonna be a hooked-on addition where we can utilize current sewer.
Yep.
Water, locker room facilities, restroom facilities and stuff, that's gonna help tremendously tremendously in keeping the price cost of this thing down. So your footprint is, if you go forward, is pretty much in that.
They didn't really even want to talk about our back.
No, they.
And they really didn't want to talk about a standalone.
He was real fuzzy about that, so.
So I was out there tonight before I got to the meeting, so is the idea that we would just extend the, um.
Multipurpose room?
Multipurpose room, just straight north from that?
Yeah, essentially, I think that's.
That's the same width as what?
And go a little farther, and take away the. That little.
So the entrance to the principal's office?
That's where they got, had to do some work, didn't they, Mr.?
Yeah, he, he, it was a head scratcher for me. We took him down there and we said, okay, now.
They took a lot of pictures.
He said, we'll work, we'll find something, he said, we'll work on that. He said, but that does present just a little bit of a challenge.
Okay.
So, but the rest of the.
That was their biggest challenge.
Yeah, the rest of the footprint, he's like.
That was, this was pretty easy.
Yeah, this is like, and the necessity for everything that we talked about in the rationale, he's like, and we, again, we walked him around to the existing facilities and he's like, I mean, he was nice about it, but he's like, I see why you're doing this. Wrestling.
The restroom and the weight room.
Weight room and, you know, those types of things, he's like, yeah, pretty inadequate from, and obviously he's in a different realm than us, you know, he builds that stuff and what he's building and he looks at what we have for a school of our size and he's like, yeah, I think you got a little bit of a need there, so. It was interesting to hear his confidence.
Yep.
But it was a good conversation, so a week from Wednesday, we'll have some better information.
Okay, anything else for that? Is that it?
That's it for building additions.
All right, we'll move to D is handbook changes. The board will address any changes to the elementary and middle school, high school handbooks introduced at the June meeting.
I think last conversation, we never had any changes per se, we wanted this on the record as being the second reading, so unless somebody wanted something to address or change, and they didn't do it, I included those in your package, so if there's nothing there, then that's all we need, so. Conversation was had.
All right, um, E is safe return to school plan. The board will discuss ideas or changes to the current required safe return plan in accordance with the DOE ARP plan.
I don't want to, I don't, we don't want to bring this up, guys, but, um, we've talked about it, we hammered it to death all last year, so it was on every agenda. But I need some feedback. You can, we have the plan, I put it in there, you can leave it as is, or as long as we have to have a plan, that's because our, but your plan could say, we're not doing anything. I mean, if that's what you want, I mean, I don't care, I don't, I'll do whatever, but this is what I put in there, your safe return to school plan is how we ended the school year. So, and if we want to have changes, then, and you know, if you want to reconvene that committee that was on that, that I have a conversation with them here in late July, a couple of weeks to, to bring it back in August meeting, and then we can push it out to the public, or if you like what we had and how we ended the school year, we can just leave it as is too. So I, my point of bringing it up is, we have to, because while we accounted for it in February, we're still in this every six month, and then you're coming back to start school again, and it's still a thing, whether we believe it or not, I don't, that's not my fight, that's not my monkey, I just want to know what you want to do with my life, so.
Any thoughts?
Well, I guess, um, as far as the positive tests and all and everything, I don't think there's really any real question there, I guess, I don't, you know, there's really no other option besides, you know, just staying out for five days and, you know, wearing a mask if you want to come back, um, I don't, I guess I don't have any issue with that. I still, my, you know, my same stance from last year, I don't, I don't think we need to be, um, worrying about close contacts so much. I think we need to stress as much as we can to the parents that if we're sick, let's just stay home. Not just if we're, you know, really sick, stay home, I mean, if we're not feeling good at all, stay home. I guess that's how I feel, that's pretty much the same way I felt last year, so.
Is there a suggestion within the safe return to school plan from a close contact tracing perspective, or are you suggesting that that comes out of the safe return to school plan and eliminate that, that concept? I, again, again, I don't care, I mean, do whatever, I just want to know what we want in that particular plan. And I hear you saying, I get the COVID positive test, which is the section that's in our return to school plan, but also contact tracing is a section in our return to plan as well, so.
Yeah.
Or if you want me to get the committee together and have that conversation and bring it back to you in August, I can do that too. But if you guys, you're well within your right to do that.
I just feel like we're chasing our tail out with that, with, with contract tracing and, uh, you know, especially down the elementary side, it seemed like, it seemed like a lot of those classes were, you know, continually just, they don't wear masks sometimes because they, you know, we decided that if the, if one, one person was positive or whatever, you know, if the whole class was a close contact, just because of the way the classrooms operate, but, uh.
But you could test out of it, correct?
That was the provision that you guys had adopted midstream in the year, that if you did not, if you were, if you had an aversion to wearing the mask, that the child within that timeframe, that one to seven days, that they could test out of it. If they tested that morning, they didn't have to wear that mask. You know, so that's still, it currently exists in your safe return to school plan with that terminology in there, but, you know, if we want to do away or suggesting that you do away with all contact tracing regardless, again, I don't, I'm not fighting, I want to know how I need to change that plan. And if you guys want to make the decision as a board, that's your prerogative, I think that's your right. Or if you want the committee to have some conversation about it, to bring it back to you, and then maybe they see it as you see it, or maybe they agree with it, I don't know. But either way, you're at the latitude to have that prerogative to, if you want me to eliminate it, I'll eliminate it. If you want to have a conversation about it with the committee that has been in place for two years, we can do that too. I can do that.
The one question I have under the students with positive tests, updated 11022, kind of along with Matt, you know, if you're staying, if you're sick, stay home, well, in here it says, uh, as long as their health permits, students attendance will be expected with absences recorded as absences. So does that mean if they're staying home, they have to, it's recorded as an absence?
They have to attend somehow virtually or however the teacher determines.
You just can't sit home. We're going to engage you in a learning experience. Usually what we did with the staff is they remoted in, they set up a Zoom call and those kids were expected, if they were healthy enough, and that's where the rubber gets, who's to say that they aren't, they aren't. You know what, I just felt like sleeping in today and I feel pretty good, I mean, type of deal, but that's.
Right, I mean, if, yeah, I guess with the, if we, with the absences or whatever, you know, it's encouraging kids if they're sick, but with the, I forgot about the e-learning, you know, if they're sick or if they're not feeling well, but yet if they're going to have an absence, they might show up for school, just.
That's what it's referencing, that we're trying to engage them in a learning experience, not onsite, but at home.
Sure, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I guess I, um, we trusted the committee to make decisions and come with them, and I would be, I would be interested in having the committee discuss it and.
Because me too, I mean, I, um, we're all here going to have a personal opinion, and that's what it really boils down to, quite frankly, and that's what it's come to with COVID. And so I, I am like Jill, uh, the committee is made up of mostly teachers.
I had, yeah.
There were some community members.
There's some staff on there, Lindsay or.
Lindsay was on it as a provider.
Was on it, we had a community, a couple of community people on it, um, Mike's wife was on it, um, our school nurse, Melissa was on it, so.
I, I think we go there. Because I think we got to draw other people's perspective, um, and, um.
I'd just be interested to hear what they think and who, what they feel comfortable with.
And that's going to come back to us anyway, just policy.
Yeah.
Because I, yeah, like you said, I have a personal feeling, but it's not about just me, so I'm good with them as a committee discussing what they're comfortable with.
Are you okay, ma'am, at least having those conversations, with those people getting together and seeing what they come up with? So, okay, I'll, I'll get that group together here and bring it back in August then, and, you know. And the main point that I wanted to do there is, again, have that conversation, so before, and I never got the job done last year, being new to the system and trying to keep all the balls in the air to get school started, I did a very poor job of articulating what the plan was to the public. We get this stuff done, we do it at the August board meeting, then I can push this stuff out via our new media platforms and like, yeah, here's what we're doing. So I, I think we'll be better equipped, um, once you guys, they bring it to you, you decide which way we want to go with that, so.
I think we all agree that it's all about keeping kids safe.
Yeah.
Keeping them in school.
I appreciate that feedback, I, I, I didn't want to do that on my, I didn't feel it was right for me to sit in the ivory tower and say, this is what we're doing, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, we'll move back to information discussion, staff reports, and we'll hear from the high school principal.
Are you asleep, Mr. Kniblins?
Yeah, not quite.
Sorry.
That's okay. Oh, during the month of June, start with, there was a, a couple of national conferences that we had advisors take, um, students too. Mrs. Bartels took Hosted Kids, the National Conference in Nashville, uh, June 21st through 26th. Uh, there's 10,000 different students from across the nation coming, that's what's a really big deal. If you don't know what Host is about, it's about, you know, students that'd be interested in eventually being in the medical field. So they had a lot, number of students do presentations and take tests, um, deal with like, uh, mock, mock accident, emergency responders, what they would do, mobile MRI services, health education, dental science, medical math, CPR. So, but I think 11 kids went and did a bunch of different things, um, had a really, really good time, sounds like. So, um, she did want to give some big thank yous to, you know, Julie for, she did a ton of the pre-work on getting everything planned and squared away with reservations and all that. Mr. Rigdon, Mr. Bruning for the use of the vans and helping get that stuff set up and getting the checks out so that everything was ready to roll, and Karaoke for chaperoning and driving, since they took two vans, they, they need to summer to go, and that's a long drive, like, trip to Nashville. When I was at Mitchell, we went to Memphis one year, that's, that's a trip, it's a grind, so that's, that's great for her to do that. Also too, they had two really good generous donations from the Avera St. Medenick Foundation and the Frontier Agribusiness that she wants to save. So good there. And then also Mrs. Capkut took, um, kiddos to San Diego, right?
Yep.
And I'll let her talk about that as she wants to.
Oh, I'll stand up. We went to San Diego, we flew out on, we flew, we didn't drive, um, June 28th and then we came back July 4th. Thank you to Mr. Bruning and Julie, they drove us over to the airport, and Mrs. Ackman, sorry. Um, I took 11 kids, um, I went and then Nicole Yonkey went along as my chaperone, 11 competitors. We had two place first in the nation, Jackie Brayley and Abby Hohn, um, placed first with our chapter website, for us, um, our local chapter website, and then Ella Gearing, um, as a seventh grader with her professional presentation on Don't Stress the Bee, Low Stress Cattle Handling, um, placed first in the nation as well. Food Innovations, Level Three, Kiana Hargans, Amber Hope and Kenna Converse, um, were 10th in the nation. Casey Gearing with her job interview was 13th in the nation. Taryn Lynch, um, did a teach and train presentation, she was 10th in the nation. Alyssa Bartelt did a professional presentation on farm safety and she was 15th in the nation. And Amadea Lukens with her Trojan Den presentation placed with a silver. Also had four girls who did a workshop when we were there. Kayden Yonkey, Amber Hope, Kiana Hargans and Kenna Converse presented on emotional health. I was presented with the Spirit of Advising Award for the state of South Dakota when we were there. There was about 7,000 kids from across the country there, so was a big eye opener for a lot of our students to see that, I mean, different demographics and personalities and all of that, so it went, um, it was good, it made a lot of first time flyers, so no major incidents there, we made all connecting flights, so that was good. We did some fun things, went to Coronado Beach, um, we got, uh, they shut down part of the zoo for SCCLA one night, so we got to go to the San Diego Zoo and, um, go to the US Midway Museum, so it was a fun trip, we learned a lot, it was my first time going, so, um, I was, I just read your email. I walked in and a lot of the other advisors were, oh, how many kids did you bring? I was like, 11, and they're like, this is your first nationals? I was like, yeah, they're like, oh, and I can see why they were like, oh, 11 was a lot with 11 high school girls, there's a reason teachers get the sun off. So, but it was fun. South Dakota is very well represented and I guess we hold a very high standard.
So we're not supposed to take 11?
No, it was good, we were one of the top schools, like us, Westingdon Springs and Redfield, I think, and Fulton, I think were the ones that took the most students, but, um, one of my advisors I stayed with, only had three girls, and I was like, oh, that must be nice, so. But no, it was a good trip, we learned a lot. Next year it's in Denver, so I think we can drive that one, but it was good.
That's awesome, thank you.
Well, thank you to both of them for being willing to organize and take them on that, I know that's a big part of their summer, but, you know, like those experiences for the students, those kids will talk about that for forever and ever. Like you said, those first time flyers, I can still remember, when I went to college basketball, the first time I flew was because of that, and I'll never forget, that's a, that's a fun experience, so very cool. And then they do so well there, that's awesome too. On top of that, I mean, just trying to get stuff going, trying to finalize the schedule, uh, get ready for that registration day. Schedules are in, everything like that, but just, just want to have that done, so when we hand them their schedules that day and we talk about, um, the new rules and how things may change a little bit, that goes well and is well accepted, so, um, trying to prep for that day, it's probably going to be, um, either the first or second week, August on a Tuesday. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Kniblins, thank you.
All right, Adam.
Elementary wise, a couple of things, we finished up our summer reading program, right, at the end, last week in June, I heard a lot of really good things about that, made up with 53 kids that participated in that, and the, it was really well attended, um, kids had a good time, I think the teachers enjoyed working with the kids and, um, I think, I think we got some good work out of it, so that was really positive. Our other summer school program, our extended school year is, is off and running, we have two weeks left of that, we have this week and one more, and then that will be wrapping up. So we have a couple, uh, teachers working with that, some of our special education students, um, so that's going on and taking place. Other than that, it's getting the building ready, shuffling classrooms and different things like that is all underway, and the custodial crew has been doing a great job getting things organized with that. Activity wise, we had the summer moratorium, so we've been shut down, uh, we got shut down from July 1st through the 7th, uh, we kind of extended that through the weekend, and so hit the ground running again today, and all teams are working hard and training and, um, things are going well with that, so won't be long here before, we have the fall, uh, parent meeting set for the last week in July, on the 26th. Uh, we'll bring in parents and all the coaches and do our, our fall sports kickoff on that night. I'm going to be meeting with all of the coaches next week and just kind of reflect on our past year, talk about mission, talk about goals for the upcoming year, um, so we're going to do that next week and kind of gear up for that fall meeting, so that's kind of where we're at with athletes.
One thing I'll probably have to remind them that they got to get physicals every year, just so a lot of people watch it.
Yeah, and we posted that on the website, but, uh, our policy is that we want all athletes to have a physical every year and to come in with Tony and, uh, do their concussion baseline testing. Working on also sending out just an online Google form for registration, so we can have an idea of the athletes, and for that matter, eventually we'll do it for the school as well, coming up here in a couple of weeks, um, but start to track that, so we have an idea before the season start of the kids that are coming, and hopefully that they have all those, um, their physical and concussion testing complete, so that we can hit the ground running, because can't participate if you don't have those, so.
Is that sixth through 12?
Six through 12.
For both, the physical and the concussion testing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, if they're going to participate, and that's something we'll talk about at the fall parent meeting. That's going to be up to the coaches discretion, we are junior high now, so if, you know, there is a need for sixth graders, all sixth graders would be included in on that. It just kind of depends on where our numbers are at and what coaches, the number of coaches that we have to support all of those kiddos and those numbers. So that'll be on kind of a sport by sport basis, but they are all included now in our junior high.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yup.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. McKinnon.
The only thing I got, my stuff was in your notes there, does anybody want to go to the associate school board's fall conference? I am unable to.
I can't.
Can't? Okay, good.
I'm sorry, it's really good, though. If anybody can ever do it, it is so good, I did it last year.
Unless you had any questions on my items I had put in your package?
I'm not going to speak to any of those.
Electric work from?
Fisher Electric is here.
A little concerned about his progress? He said he hadn't been here for a week.
Well, then, I think he's, part of that coincided with the holiday, but, um, he's been here, he was here again, he was here again today, I mean, he's, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Yup.
Based on what he's gotten done so far.
Yup, 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 yup. So that whole wing, this whole wing over here, about right here, has been retrofitted, so.
Okay.
No.
I don't remember if this was in your notes or not, about?
I got Lake Project HVAC Summer Meeting.
HVAC, 17th?
Oh, potential start school.
Yeah.
Good point. Comments on that?
No.
No?
I mean, I, I mean, it wasn't an issue when all the, everything started and the bids went already, I mean, if it was going to work around.
And that certainly, they're not advocating that, they just asked the question. And I worked with Josh Paulson on that, my last conversation with him on Friday, if he thought that what, the hang-up right now is the univentilators, well, that's your big cabinet that's up against the wall, that's what they're having trouble getting their hands on. The AC, the condensing units outside, they got, Mitchell Plumbing and Heating is on board if we want to try to do the retrofit with that. He just asked the question, would it be the notion of delay starting school, you know, if push come to shove, and I said, I don't know, you can ask, I said, I'm not wild about it, I said, we put that information out to our parents, I think, you know, we stick hold of that. He goes, well, then, would you be willing to shuffle some classrooms? If we get started and we get into this, he said, I, the main concern is I don't want you starting school without cooling. I said, yep, we're not doing that. He said, but are you willing to shuffle some teachers' classrooms for a day? I said, you know, well, I think we could do that, you know, we could do that before delaying the start of school.
Right, because, I mean, so we have to make that announcement, you know, now, and then it's delayed another two weeks.
Exactly.
And then what happens if it doesn't even come in that time?
Well, and that's his whole point. That's his whole point. He said, I can't guarantee you, Pat, that these univentilators, he said, right now there's a ship date of August 4th, he said, I would just correct them on the 8th, he said, but that's already changed once because of the ship date was in July, now it's August 4th, and we'll see where we go from there, so. But I appreciate your feedback on that, man, thanks for drawing that to my attention. I mean, we're just not going to be, that's a no bargain type of concept, and I have no problems with that. There's other ways that we can potentially get it going here if the necessity is there. The main what's driving that is the system, once they put the two boilers back online, it's filling them back up, and if there's a way that we could do that, so in a year from now they didn't have to drain it back down again in order to put the univentilators in, put the new control valves on it, it would just make things like a little bit easier for everybody, but if that's what it comes to, that's what it comes to. And they know that. And I talked to Damon today, Damon was here, he stopped by, and he was, he said they all were fine, so, so good question.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to action items, number 18. A is to approve contract Pitts Construction for Construction Management Services. The board will discuss approving the contract with Pitts Construction for their role in the process of building in addition to the school.
That is what?
And this is what we had looked at several times, right?
That document that I included in there, very similar to the contracts that we approved with architecture. And they're standard contracts, they're almost identical, to be honest with you, and Rodney said, gave his stamp of approval on that, so.
Okay. So you've seen a motion to approve?
And did you have any conversation with Pitts at all of, for whatever reason it doesn't happen, you know?
Yup.
That they won't be able?
Yup, yup.
Basically, there's a, I mean, if they get to that point where they do the work and all the bids and getting all that stuff together, and then we open that stuff up and you come to the decision like, oh boy, this is just, we can't do this, then, I can't remember what he told me, but there's a percentage fee in there, and same with our team, based on the work that they have involved in that, that we're still responsible to pay them for the work that they put into it.
Okay. Any motion to approve the contract for Pitts Construction for Construction Management Services?
So.
I'll second it.
Moved by Leishner, same by Nevel, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, B is open bids for Armory Roof Replacement Project. The board will open bids received by all vendors who submitted a bid package for the Armory Roof Replacement.
Craig, you have that paperwork?
Got it. So we've received two bids, they were both received on Friday, one at 1:00 PM and one at 1:35 PM, so we're good on that respect. And the first bid that I'm opening is from ARS Techta America Company, and they're out of Sioux Falls. Bear with me here, because I'm not sure if I actually know what I'm doing on this deal, so. Okay, so 2002, the base bid from ARS Techta America Company is for $109,020. So that's the base bid, we put some unit pricing in there, so for the replacement of any wet, damaged, or deteriorated roof insulation per board foot is $4.50, Craig, per board foot. The unit two was the replacement of any wet, damaged, or deteriorated wood blocking, that if it's up there, that needs to be replaced, that's $66.50 per board foot. And then a unit price for number three was the replacement of any rusted or damaged metal decking that's also included up there if it comes, if it's needed, is $22.50 a square foot.
Per board foot?
Bro, sorry.
Or is it something else?
It's per square foot on the metal.
Okay. Got it.
So the total was?
Okay. $109,020 is their base bid. Questions on that one? Okay, and then the second bid is from Freedom Construction LLC from Rapid City.
Do you just rip all the wrapping off your Christmas presents, or do you keep it?
I usually don't open Christmas presents. One, I don't get them, and some, I do.
Says a lot about a person, what they do when they open a Christmas present.
The kids open it up when they were little. Freedom Construction, 2000, base bid for the Armory, $164,000 on the base bid. Unit price for number one, the wet, damaged, deteriorated roof insulation is $1.40 per square foot. Replacement of any wood blocking, $2.25. And then a unit replacement for rusted metal, damaged metal decking is $2.75 per square foot. So.
So it was $1.40, 2.25, 2.75.
And this one has those per square foot.
Yeah, let's say it was a different.
The second one.
Yup, the second one. And I, you know, I'm not 100% exactly sure, you know, Techta was, you know, per board foot, per board foot, and then per square foot.
Okay. So all three of those other ones were per square foot, okay?
Yeah.
I don't think this one was. Second one wasn't, was it?
Uh, no, it doesn't say per square foot on the unit price for the wood blocking, it just says $2.25.
But you have board foot and per board foot in front of that.
Oh, yeah, per board foot, my fault, per board foot, yeah. It just didn't, yeah. He answered that question.
Okay.
$2.25 per board foot.
Okay.
And the other components were per square foot, so. So you have a base bid of $109,164,000. And both, I asked them to put their, both had their other documents included in the bid as well, so. So now it's just a matter of accepting one.
So did either one have a timeframe, Mr. McKinnon?
That was not put in the spec, but at the conversation, I've talked to both owners, owner and project manager, that it was going to be a fall project for them. Didn't give me a completion date, of course, we didn't put it in there either, but anything roofing, I suspect they'd like to get it done before the snow flies, so. Yeah, that's partly my fault, writing the spec as far as putting a completion date on there, but to me, it's about working the bend, working with that contractor to get it done, and the reason for all the time.
When they were doing their inspections after, did they indicate any areas that they could see that already knew needed to be replaced, any of the board or flashing or?
So, the one vendor that we did have come and walked, their comment, even though, what precipitated that, where was that two-inch seam that was up there?
Yup.
Even though that roof is shot, he didn't, by walking on it, he didn't really have any concerns with the underlayment and the issues that it was going to have to take all that decking off of there and start all over, so. It seemed pretty solid.
So it was pretty clear-cut decision, though?
Yeah, essentially. And typically, school boards, you take them up later, and so you just need to make a motion on that.
So I'll make a motion to accept the bid from ARS Techta America Company for the amount of $109,020.
Base bid.
Base bid. Had to put that $20 on there, didn't I?
Yeah, I don't want to get that, but.
It's a cushion, just in case.
Moved by Leishner. Seconded by Turner to approve the bid from ARS Techta America Company.
And that, that's in your budget?
Yeah.
That was my next question.
Yup, it is.
Scott, that's for the Armory Roof, I don't know if you're, there was a big hole on the side, basically.
Yup.
Yup. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
Was that from Jill, or is that just from where, Terry? Do you remember when I was replaced? I thought, I remember we were in place when I was in high school. I remember they had dumped Rockout Frontier, but that was a long time ago.
That was a few years ago, yeah.
It's done well.
If you can get 25 years out of a roof, you're golden, and he said this one's a right about there, so.
All right, we'll look to C, designate committee appointments. School board members will be appointed to the following committees, ASBSD, Delegate Assembly, Board of Equalization, Building and Grounds, Calendar, Personnel and Activities, Curriculum, and Bid Opening. Do we have a list of who was what before?
Yup.
Can you read us?
All right, so last year Jill was the delegate, Jed was the alternate. Lindsay was on the calendar committee, John was the representative on the Board of Equalization, Matt was the representative to the James Valley Co-op Board, John Proll was on the Building and Grounds and Bid Opening Committee, Jill Nebel on the Personnel and Activities Committee, and Jed Schoenfelder on the Curriculum Committee.
And I've, I've never done anything for whatever that James Valley?
Co-op Board is.
I've never, never been notified of anything on that, so.
I'm not sure what direction all of that is, because that, Sped Co-op, that board, that representation that goes on there is done by all the administrators.
Supposedly just have to have a school board member or something?
I don't even know the necessity of it.
Jim do that? And he did do something with it.
Who did?
I thought it was Jim.
Who, honey?
Yeah.
I, Mark used to be on it, and we used to go to the meetings.
We meet four times a year.
I, Mark went to a couple, didn't he?
I think so, probably.
Okay.
When I go to that, it's Superintendent for Moon Socket, Sanborn, Dr. Graves, myself, business manager.
Call in.
Steve's there, and then Tracy, our director, Ms. Christensen, and then the Mitchell, there's, for whatever reason, they do, their school board member is there, devils.
So you have three things. Is Scott, is there something that you see that John, because we could get, he could take one of those, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you want to do?
The Building and Grounds interests me a little bit, but.
Mm-hmm. You should take that, is that okay, John?
Sure.
And then, do you want to do the?
Do we want two on the Building and Grounds?
You always have a, you do typically have two.
I wouldn't have the problem building on that if that was available, since I don't do anything with whatever else I was on.
So you need two people on Building and Grounds? You always have two people for every committee, or what, for backup, or what?
Typically.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's what you did last year.
We only had one last year.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I was happy to base this from last year, so. But that doesn't mean, this year, I mean, with this project, you want, you want two, for sure.
Nope.
What about the calendar committee? That was when Lindsay was on that.
I can do that.
Good. Are you okay doing the delegate and Jed being the alternate again, Jed?
Or do you, do you want to do that, Matt?
I can, I don't remember when it is, it's in September or something.
It's second, uh, second weekend in November. Second or third weekend.
Oh, that, does that impact you with your?
Yeah, at all, definitely.
That's why you didn't do it last year, wasn't it?
Yeah. They got scheduled these things around, far, but I don't know, it's not, we'll just revolve around.
But Jed was on there last year.
Yeah, he was only the backup, though, because of when it was, was in, like, say, volleyball week or something weird?
Might have been.
Yeah, that's why I said I was worried about it.
They don't change the date.
When is it? What, do you know?
Second or third weekend in November.
Okay. I don't care, yeah, I can keep, it doesn't matter to me, I'll do whatever.
So is your Board of Equalization?
It's John.
Taxi is John, you okay with that?
I am.
I think we're okay keeping one on there, keeping one on the representative for the James Valley Co-op Board, since you said you don't need to.
So Building and Grounds will be Scott and Matt? Is that what you guys want to do?
I follow that.
Okay.
Personnel and Activities Committee.
I'll take Calendar, Personnel and Activities.
And then Jed stays on the Curriculum and the?
Yup. And John is Bid Opening, do you want to keep that, is that okay?
Sure.
Well, John will make three of the grounds in bid opening.
Scott and Matt are going to take that.
That was all one.
What do you mean?
It's not a list of that, it's one on here, and then there was.
Oh, last year it was one, Building, Grounds, and Bid Opening Committee was all one.
Oh, it's separated.
It's separated, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just telling you, it wasn't last year.
You mean, you can move those out?
Yup. So we'll put John on the Bid Opening Committee?
Be this one.
Okay. You got them all, Mr. Bruning?
So I've got Jill as delegate, Jed alternate, Jill on Calendar Committee, John representative Board of Equalization, Matt on James Valley Coop, Scott and Matt on the Building and Grounds, John on Bid Opening, Jill Personnel and Activities, and Jed on Curriculum.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve those?
They're, you would just make the following appointments, so the motion.
Okay.
Done, you're stuck.
Thank you. D, so set activity prices, the board will discuss rates to set for all activities that patrons are expected to pay to attend.
So last year we did $3 for students, $5 for adults for the same game, $4 for students, $6 adults for double headers, $50 for the activity passes for an adult, and $30 for the adults over 65 years of age for activity passes. All Parks and Students, K through 12 will be allowed to attend all Parks and Events free of charge. $50 for the activity passes for an adult, and $30 for the adults over 65 years of age for activity passes. All Parkston students, K through 12, will be allowed to attend all Parkston events free of charge. Investor presents your pass to the ticket takers, or you will be asked to pay the individual ticket price for that evening's admission. I'm Lee Malone. I think it went up there last year, didn't it?
I think it worked, good.
Okay, so I need a motion for that, again.
So moved.
Move by Nevo, second by Laishner, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we will move to E, set school lunch prices, but we're not gonna do that.
So I need a motion to table that to the August meeting.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Move by John. Need a second?
A second.
Second by Nevo. The table is setting the school lunch prices until the August meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
F is set preschool fees, the board will discuss establishing the rate for preschool student tuition for those that attend the district's pre-K program.
There was a sheet in your packet, that's the letter that we sent home, that's what, okay, so that one list that showed all the pricings, it said sliding scale for preschool. This is the sliding scale. It's based on free introduced, um, lunch application, so if people fill out free introduced lunch application, they can qualify for reduced rates for the, um, preschool as well. And, um, last year, it was basically, there's nine payments of $130. We divided August and May's in half for $65 apiece, and then eight hundred and thirties in the middle, just because they weren't full months. When you do the math of that, it's about a dollar ninety-two per hour for preschool services. Um, I checked with the daycare and not, I did not check with the Parkston, uh, what's that, the Trojan Ben, or Trojan Learning Center. I just checked with a private one, and they're at $2.75 an hour. So our dollars, or $130 dollars a month is almost a dollar, or 75 cents cheaper than, than daycare. So, um, we did, if you look, we raised that two years ago, I believe, from 120 to 130, is what it was.
And does that cover our costs all the way?
No, we're not, no, remember, that's part of the enterprise fund. We're lucky if we cover half. Well, we're supplementing it by sixteen, seventeen thousand, so.
Seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
But some schools around us don't charge at all, and we hear that.
You hear that a lot.
The ones south of us don't charge at all, the ones in Ethan do, um, but they're also four-day-a-week, preschool, I believe.
I don't know, I thought looking at the scale, I thought it looked pretty, pretty reasonable.
But I just wanted to give you a comparison of what it is compared to, because on a per-hour basis, it's about a dollar ninety-two an hour. And so they're getting a deal by sending them here rather than leaving them in daycare.
So, Mr. Fisher, how are we, how are we doing for interest and attendance and?
We have thirty-seven right now.
What was it last year?
Uh, forty. So I think we're right. I wouldn't be surprised if we get a couple right before school starts here. We'll cap it at forty, we want, because we have two sections, we have our Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday, and we don't want to be more than twenty in those.
So what were the comments from the parents last year on the tour?
Um, I think, you know, Craig kind of hit on that, it's, you get a couple of that, know that there are free options elsewhere. I, you know, the majority of our families don't balk at it, really.
But I do have some that I have, I don't collect on.
Yeah.
Just like food service.
Are you proposing a necessity to leave it alone, or do we need an increase?
Your increase isn't gonna be, I mean, ten bucks is gaining, yeah.
Not gonna get you anywhere.
Well, I have thirty-seven kids.
I think he always goes to his calculator.
But you got thirty-seven kids.
Seventy dollars.
Times ten bucks, times nine payments, gaining you $3,300. Of the, of the seventeen thousand that we're losing.
Assuming they're all full rate.
That is assuming they're all, that is correct, Matt, that's assuming they're all fully paid, which, which is not the case, yep, yep.
Because there's six slots in there.
For sure.
Designed for those who came.
Yep, through the head start program.
That's correct.
And we also had in there last year, that should the district close due to COVID-19 only, parents will be given the opportunity to continue or discontinue services. If services are discontinued, the district will reimburse that $16.25 per day of closure, because that's what it came out to be, so.
I don't think we should raise it.
Leave it alone for another year? Re, relook at it again? I mean, as daycare rates change, we have to change, but it hasn't been that long since we have to.
We shouldn't need a motion, since we're not changing anything?
No, we need a motion.
We do, okay.
Yep.
Need a motion to approve, please?
So.
So. Move by Pearl, same by Laishner, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carried.
G is set driver's education fee, we recommend a $250 fee with $150 per student for instructor pay.
Hundred and sixty.
So that's a hundred and fifty.
It was a hundred and sixty, though.
So.
I probably mislinked it.
It's a hundred and sixty, okay.
Well, here's, okay, so currently, it was $200 per student, and Mr. Akri, it's been a long time since we have adjusted his pay for this. Um, and surrounding it, I think Mr. Knipfling can attest to this, up at Mitchell, he's getting paid, you know, he got $110 per student, um, prior to, there's this year. And, um, that comes out to be about, what did he tell me, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen or something an hour, seventeen an hour? I think area schools are paying $25 an hour. For the driving time. Classroom time is different, but for driving time, they were paying 25 bucks an hour. Um, our average was like sixteen to seventeen dollars an hour for everything combined, because he didn't separate it out that way. Some schools do, some schools don't, every, everybody had a little different way of.
Twenty bucks an hour for classroom time, you got 10 hours of prep, plus, so that ended up being like 970 bucks to teach a class, and then it was 25 bucks per hour, so 150 bucks per year. That's the initial case.
And I know in trip, it's more too. So basically, we raised the price per student 50 bucks and gave it directly to the driver, or to the ride-along guy, the instructor.
And I, I think you and I looked, it'd been all of six years before, six years since he.
Oh, yeah. In my timeframe, we've changed it once, as a district manager.
And how many times has he almost died?
Ran into the hospital once.
I don't know if 150 is enough. He's almost died a lot.
He ran into a hospital?
I know, that was, that was.
Drove into the back wall, back wall to hospital one day, and nowhere else. And just talked to the kids, and they tell you stories.
Clearly, we're telling him, your life is only worth a hundred and sixty dollars per student. Okay, anyway, whatever.
So that was our, our recommendation, was raising the price per student 50 dollars and giving it directly to the instructor.
I'm good with that. Any motion to approve?
Yep. Move by Laishner.
Second.
Second by Turner, any other discussion?
So what vehicle are we using currently?
We use van four for the last couple of years, that's the one that's current, they just, we keep the brake, they advertise that, his foot brakes up there in the whole year, we don't even take it out anymore. So the last, I don't know how many years, he's used that black van four.
Craig, I think what Dad's got on the one for white.
About 90,000. Or actually, maybe over 100. That, that one might be over 100. Those two black ones are right around 100,000, so. We'll replace this old gray one, and then next year, we'll do one of those two.
All right, we'll move to H, approve our home tuition rates. The board will set the tuition rates for out-of-district students that are placed in the Our Home Incorporated program.
I included that sheet there, just so you have an idea, so, I mean, it's kind of a, Craig can speak better to it than I am, because some kids, we bill other schools for, some kids depend on how they're placed within the program, but when schools, uh, have a responsibility there, that's the tuition, we turn around and charge them.
That's what these rates are for. And currently, this year is around 10 to 11 different kids a, a month that I bill all the school districts for, because these are the kids that are on their count, student counts, AD, and not ours.
Basically wash.
Yeah, yep. And there's a formula spreadsheet that we had made, yeah, it's all based on the, um, dollar amounts that the state sets for the sped. And then, along with the general fund portion as well. So basically, that 8206, level one, that is what, if we had a kid that just 11, or level one, that'd be the general fund amount. Um, because level one is just speech therapy services, and those really, there's no calculation for that. So then the other ones, the difference, and we put 8206 in the general, and then the difference would go in sped for all of those other amounts, or levels.
Okay, we just need a motion to approve?
Yep.
So moved.
Move by Laishner.
Second.
Second by Pearl. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, that's end of our agenda, and we have, we'll take a recess. Oh, you got some?
No, we're good, we've got an executive.
Yeah, we have an executive session, so we'll take a five-minute recess and come back at 9:15. Thank you.